All please. Welcome and recording.
Councilmember Huffty.
Here.
Councilmember Haskell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff.
Here.
Mayor Alfs.
Here. Our first item will be oral communications. If you wish to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do it. We cannot take action, but we will give you three minutes for items not on tonight's agenda. Are there any oral communications? Okay, I see several hands up on Zoom. Rita Combs, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. I just want to ask clarification out loud on a question about the Inclusionary Housing Fund. The housing fund was mostly funded by Blue Oaks Project and another project to work on the fund housing projects, portable housing projects in town. I'm a little confused. The Inclusionary Housing Fund was mentioned yesterday in the Finance meeting with a report from a subcommittee of the Finance Committee. They had some really good ideas on how the monies could be allocated. The fund was also referred to at one of the last town council meetings regarding the draft housing element. It was mentioned that all of the money was committed in various ways in the draft housing element that's to be sent to HCD. It's not clear to me whether that, or anyone, I guess, if there's going to be a meeting with all those subcommittees from different committees, or whether this is a done deal and planning or the council will reach out to the subcommittee from Finance or the other ones to let them know that there's no further need for conversations about these Inclusionary Housing Fund monies because it's all in the draft housing element. So I'm just trying to follow this string, but it's just a little, a little hard of where, you know, if these conversations should continue or there's no more conversation about these monies. And I just hate to see our wonderful volunteers in our town, including the people on the council. I know everybody's working so hard to get these things done, to, to use some of their personal time when things are already decided on. Thank you, and I give the rest of my time to Randy True. Thank you.
Jeff, is it okay if I add a clarification of a step on that? Because I was in the Finance Committee. So this is not for discussion and it's not a fulsome reply, but we will be having, Mary and I are on the Subcommittee for Inclusionary Housing. We are in the course of planning a meeting with the subcommittees of the Finance and the Race and Equity Committee, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Okay, next up I see, do you want to talk now, Randy? Okay, next up I see David Cardinal. David, go ahead.
Great, thanks. I have two, hopefully can you hear me first of all?
Yes.
Okay, two hopefully quick comments. One, there seems to be some confusion among our residents about the definition of a study session. Mary and I guess Judy or Judith or whatever have been having study sessions about the general plan. So when I notified people we were having a study session at the town council meeting tonight, they didn't understand the difference. So there wasn't any real notion that this was like a real thing and it was a legislative body that was getting input. So I think it'd be really good if we could come up with a way to differentiate that. And second, related to that, I'm curious about what topics qualify for a study session in the town hall. God bless our 1964 general plan, but would be, would it be possible to host study sessions on other histories of our town and area, like teaching the history in the color of law? That history for good or bad helps shape our heritage, our ownership and our town, but it's easy to ignore. So I'm sure we could get some experts in the housing history of this area going well behind, beyond how various subcultures were included or not included, to give a broader discussion of how our town has fit into the broader picture of its past and then the demarcation line of 1964 where many things were frozen. So I'd love to know if that's also a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion, David. We'll, we'll follow up with you on that offline. For our next comment, I just wanted to, I wanted to introduce and welcome Shawna Clark. You'll see her on the Zoom at home. Shawna is acting as our Consulting City Clerk. She will be acting as sort of an interim. She's remote, so she won't be able to do everything that a clerk does here, and our staff will continue filling in for some of those things. But Shawna, welcome and thank you for your help as we recruit for a permanent fill for that position.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Okay, next up is Allison Illich. Allison, go ahead.
Hi, guys. I am speaking tonight because I, if you recall, in March, end of March, we had a couple of cliffhangers at that town council meeting, and I've been tuning into the subsequent meetings, hoping to see on the agenda follow-up to those items involving the Fire Marshal's comments that kind of sailed in supposedly at the last minute, and also what's happening with the Glen Oaks investigation. So now it's been a month. It'd be great, it would have been great to have had those items agendized so that we could all hear what you guys are thinking or talking about. Thanks.
Okay, thanks for the comment. Jennifer Hammer is next. Jennifer, go ahead.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, Zoom is acting differently now. It, you have to wait until it asks you to unmute. It's, it's very strange. Anyways, thank you. I am the Chair of the Portola Valley Wildfire Preparedness Committee, and last Saturday, over 300 residents learned about defensible space, home hardening, and emergency preparedness at the Portola Valley Wildfire Preparedness Fair. Our speaker series included some eye-opening presentations. One was about what would happen during a wildfire event. A second presentation was about how residents can navigate the new fire insurance regulations that are taking effect this month. These presentations are on YouTube, and I encourage everyone to watch them. Just go to YouTube and search for Portola Valley Wildfire Preparedness Fair. I don't have time to thank everyone who made this event a success, but I must thank Carrie Chin, who guided this event forward for over a year. I would also like to thank Howard Young and our wonderful public work staff, including Jeremy and Scott. And thank you to our Town Council Liaison Craig Taylor, Vice Mayor Wernikoff, and Town Councilmember Mary Huffty. You all helped move this event forward. I also want to thank the town committees who gave up their Saturday, the Conservation Committee, Sustainability Committee, and the Emergency Preparedness Committee, all hosted an exhibit. And finally, the biggest thank you is to my wonderful committee members, MJ Lee, Dee Bailey, Wanda Jenner, and Nona Sharillo. They created this event and made it a success. Thank you.
And thank you, Jennifer, for all of your work on making that event a success. Well done.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Next up is Leslie Crease. Leslie, go ahead.
Well, Jeff, as an aside, you're echoing a little bit on Zoom, and I don't know why, but, but why? Just a, just a thought. Listen, at our last town council meeting, members of the town council received a list of fire mitigation measures from Don Bullard, our Fire Chief, and his request that, that these be put into our code and codified. I mean, Don was close to yelling. I mean, that was the most virulent I've seen him. He felt these things are critical to his safety, and in fact, the Fire Department has gone so far as to hire their own council because of this, yet nowhere is this list available to town residents. It's not in the agenda packet. It's not in the action minutes. It's not on tonight's agenda. I wonder how is this possible? I mean, why is the town council not talking about this? Pardon the pun, but it seems like a pretty hot issue, and it certainly involves our security and safety going into the summer. Thank you, and I cede my remaining one minute and 50 seconds to Randy True.
Town Attorney Silver, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. So at the last meeting, we received seven items to be incorporated into a resolution that was delivered to us from the Woodside Fire Department, Woodside Fire District, and we received that list the day before the hearing, and we did release it in, into the public record. I worked with the special counsel that had been hired by the district for representing the district specifically on SEQUET issues, which, which is an acronym for the California Environmental Quality Act. And the SEQUET attorney and I both agreed that those items should be incorporated into the resolution that was before the council that evening. We worked on language to be incorporated into that resolution. That language was then taken by Woodside Fire District's attorney and reviewed with her client, and it was acceptable to, to the client. So the motion passed on a three to zero vote, so yeah, those items have been incorporated into the actual resolution. The, the items, we'll require some follow-up, and some of those action items need to be performed by the Fire District. Some need to be before we perform by the town, and I expect that, that those action items will be taking place over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Okay, I see one more hand on Zoom. Betsy Morgan Thaler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Alfs. And hello, committee members, council members, excuse me. I am speaking as a member of the Open Space Committee and make a request that the Council Subcommittee on In-Lu Housing meet with the Open Space Subcommittee on In-Lu Housing, if in fact it is formed by vote at the meeting that we will be holding in eight days. The Subcommittee has interest and cause for input, I think, to the eventual decision that you make about such funds. Thank you for considering the request.
Thank you, Betsy. Greg has his hand up. Greg, go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, there is a delay on the connecting with the Zoom connection for public comment. First of all, I attended the Wildfire Preparedness Fair on Saturday, and I want to congratulate the town council and Jennifer and all her committee members and volunteer. It was really spectacular. I attended the session last year. The speaker series was a terrific addition, and I took full advantage of that. In the interest of time, I know you guys are trying to finalize the housing element at the next town council meeting, so I wanted to, I've, I've taken a look at it, and I just wanted to make a recommendation, and it's really in the context of what Craig Taylor often refers to as unintended consequences. So in summary, my recommendation for your consideration is not to unnecessarily expose Portola Valley to loss of local control, and that particularly relates to the lot next to Roberts 4394. And I suggest, therefore, you consider reducing the top end of the proposed zoning range, which in the document is RM3 to RM21. The draft housing limit, element document now reduces the RENA quota on that lot from 23 to 21. So an RM19 actually delivers 22 housing units on that site because it's 1.18 acres. RM20 and RM21 is not required to deliver 21 housing units on that 1.1 acre lot. And what I'm particularly concerned about is upzoning any private lot in Portola Valley to RM20 or above because of the loss of control if the owner takes advantage of the Mullins Law, which, as you well know, includes a density bonus. So 20 units per acre actually becomes 36. The housing element document specifically refers to the town's intention behind that zoning of a resale of that property, in which case we don't know who would own it, and they could take advantage of the Mullins Law if the site was developed for the low and very low income residents. So given the fact that the time's about to expire, let me just repeat the recommendation, which is for you to consider reducing the rezoning of 4394 to no higher than RM19 because you don't require any rezoning higher than that to deliver the 21 housing unit elements in the document. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Ellen Vernaza. Ellen, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like, I have a question along the lines of Leslie's question regarding the codification of the Fire Marshal's requested seven mitigations. What is it, what are the exact steps that we need to do to get this adopted, much less codified? It just seems like, okay, we've had, they, originally, some of these were presented, I think, in January to the town council, and I don't think we ever heard about that. And now these were presented last, you know, a month ago. What are we doing to, what are the steps we're taking to get this done and codified as soon as possible? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a simple answer for that question because some of them involve other agencies, and some of them will be public processes that need several meetings. So it's going to take some time to get them done. We've, the council committed to them in a resolution that's part of the ISMD approval, and we will move forward on them as, as, as quickly as we can. Kristy Corley has her hand up. Kristy, go ahead.
Yes, I'm hoping that we can get a thorough report on the Alpine Road safety and evacuation route regarding the eucalyptus trees. We sure don't want to have another death on our road, and although that, you know, a 30-year-old man lost his life, and we want to make sure that no one from Portola Valley loses their life due to a disaster in the future. I think my other comment is, I'm going to give my, rest of my time to Randy True. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In the schoolhouse, Rusty Day has his hand up. Rusty, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to echo and expand on the comments that Allison Illich and Leslie Crease and Ellen Vernaza just made. The Fire Marshal, when he spoke on March 29th, was very clear that he wasn't interested in having this moved to the safety element, because after all, it's been there for 14 years and still not enacted in this town. Rather, what he was interested in was seeing the town move forward on codifying the measures that were listed in his mitigation measures, and that means moving them from the general plan, safety element where they currently reside, into the municipal code. He was very specific about that. So I wanted to see what the town did because we only had a draft resolution that was blank and ambiguous. We didn't have the language of the full resolution. So I wanted to see what that resolution was. I went to the town website and searched to see what the resolution was, but I can't find it. It's not on there. Fortunately, though, I got a copy of it yesterday when I attended the study session for the safety element on the general plan, and I've read that resolution. I've read it carefully. The only reference to the Fire Marshal's mitigation measures is contained in the recitals of the resolution. It's not in the body of the resolution. The body of the resolution is very clear that as far as this town is concerned, the housing element will have no significant effect on wildfire risk, and there's no need for mitigation. There's an attached MMRP, and in the MMRP, nothing in the MMRP addresses the Fire Marshal's mitigation measures. Nothing. Instead, under wildfire, the MMRP says implementation of the ISMMD and of the housing element will not impact wildfire risk and requires no mitigation. So I don't think it's quite true that our town has heard the Fire Marshal or committed to implement the measures that he's asked for to be codified, not perhaps address sometime, I think, the, the resolution of the, of the recitals indicate six to 12 months from now, perhaps, in the housing element, you might address this. I don't think he's looking for that kind of ambiguous future promise of perhaps action. I think he's looking for action. And so I would like to ask the town council to follow through, agendize the Fire Marshal's mitigation measures for a hearing, let the Fire Marshal come in, explain what he wants, how you go about putting this on the agenda so that you can codify this. That doesn't mean that they have to be codified today, but it means that you need to work today to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, go ahead. Randy True, 4860 Alpine Road. Thanks for taking my comment. I don't expect to use all that extra time. I just didn't get caught at the end. And I've submitted some written requests related to important governance matters. They are, they're threefold, and the first one relates to prohibiting interruption during public comment. I think this one is in everybody's interest to not have any potential for conflict when we're, when we're up here speaking. It is, it, it, it can be nerve-wracking, and the, the statements, the document about public comments during meetings talks about how it can be difficult for the public to comment. So I would like to request some, some redline edits to, to make this process non-discretionary. So there may be multiple reasons why someone wants to give their public comment first in the meeting when they have to leave, and they may touch on topics that are agendized, but touch on other topics as well. So I think, I think this will help us all to, to really just get this clarified and totally logically consistent. These, these edits were a bit more complex to do that. The next, the next two are simpler, but also more important. The second request is for committee chairs to be able to determine their own agenda. I don't know if this has been a problem lately, but this was a very big problem previously with the previous ad hoc committee on town-owned property back in 2018, 2019. Important committees, Conservation Committee, Open Space Acquisition Committee had their agendas changed, and, and important items that they wanted to discuss blocked by former mayor and former town manager. That just shouldn't happen. The committees are very important and, and can, can really help tremendously the governance of our town, and this is, this is a great opportunity to reempower them. And I think this, this can be done with a simple change. I suggested some language for that. I understand the structure. The committees are under review, and, and there could be further changes as a part of that, but I feel like this one's just really important. But the, the most important request I'm making tonight is, is request number three, and that's that council members have the ability to put items on the town council meeting agenda. And I wasn't sure what the, what the, what the rule for this was. I've been asking around. I did find it in the, in the committee handbook. I didn't find it in the municipal code linked on the website, but it says clearly that the mayor and town manager and with the vice mayor set the town council meeting agenda. And I understand that, that on administrative matters, that's probably a fine process, but when it comes to important matters and or controversial matters, I feel it's, and I think a large number of town citizens would agree that we want our full elected town council to be able just to agendize items, not to have those be able to be blocked. And so there could be a procedure for this that, that happens in writing, and this is especially important, given Mayor Alfs, Vice Mayor Wernikoff, that you are from the, the previous council, and we have three new elected members. We need to be able to have them put items on the agenda. And this, there's, there's been multiple discussion, questions tonight about important items, and if one of the town council members wants those agendized, that should happen, and it was, it could be a, a really clean way to, to do this, and this could be a, a simple change. I did ask at the end of my written public comment to, because this is so important, I'm hoping that the town attorney would be able to clarify how this, this third request, how that rule change could be actually implemented, but fully understanding that's not any agreement to implement it, but just understanding mechanistically how that could happen. And I do want to make, as I was listening to the previous comments, I do want to make a fourth request, and that fourth request is, I don't know if this can be official as a public record request. I'm happy to give it in writing tomorrow, but I would, I would like the letter from the Fire Marshal to Laura Russell from June, from January 4th, to be posted on the, on the meeting website, to be posted publicly. I would also like the response from the town manager, with other signatories, sent back to the Woodside Fire District Board to also be made public. That's an important dialogue about the intersection of fire safety and the housing element. We are at a very critical juncture on these issues, and we, as town citizens, need to understand that dialogue. They should have been made public when they were received. They should definitely be made public, please, tomorrow. Okay, thank you for taking my public comment. Thank you.
Ruth, Mayor, if I could just
Please.
mention that I know, Randy, you have not been attending the meetings recently, but we have implemented a new process for introducing colleagues' memos, so any council member can submit colleagues' memos on any issue and agendize those for discussion. We've had several colleagues' memos written by both old and new council members. In terms of the Code of Ethics that, that you had requested, again, you weren't, the prior council meetings, but a subcommittee had, has been formed to address those issues and have submit, has developed a Code of Ethics that I believe will be submitted through a colleague's memo or through some other form in the next few meetings. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Town Attorney. Okay. Seeing no other hands on Zoom or in the schoolhouse, we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there public comments? Anyone can comment on the consent agenda. Council members can pull items from the consent agenda. Public comments on the consent agenda. Rita Combs, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I had a question on the minutes. There were only three council members that were present last time, but there's a vote that was mentioned from the last meeting, 302, and just want a clarification, if that means something different than what I, you know, I thought it's, yes, no abstain, but there were only three council members present. So perhaps that needs to be explained or looked at or corrected. Thank you. what I, you know, I thought it's yes, no abstain, but there were only three council members present. So perhaps that needs to be explained or looked at or corrected. Thank you.
I believe that the two were counted as abstentions because they were absent.
No, can I speak to this? So I I think the public's confused. The meeting that most people referring to was two council meetings ago. But no, but the but the no, the the three zero two, that was the IS M M D.
No, in in the minutes from the last meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we we just need to know how you're keeping score. Three zero two is what?
Let's pull, I'm going to pull. Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands up. I will ask, does any council member wish to pull an item from consent?
So the memo on the fee increases, I have a couple of brief questions.
Okay, so you want to pull items?
Yeah.
What about, you want to pull anything else? Actually, let's, I I will, I will pull item four A of the minutes. Actually, yeah, so it does, on this, on these minutes, it does in fact say motion period three zero two. Are are we counting absent council members as abstentions?
This one we were, but we can change the format.
I actually don't remember. I I feel like it's usually been just, it's usually just been three zero. I'm not sure. I don't know if there's a legal requirement, but I know that I think, okay. Any other? Yeah, I agree. It probably should just be three zero. It does, it does say that. It does say three zero. Okay. Any other comments on the minutes or corrections? Any public comment on the minutes other than the one we've already received? Dave Cardinal.
Sure, it's a little hard to track the conversation over Zoom, but if it's a three zero two vote that I understand on the IS M M D, there were five council members present and three voted yes and two abstained. I just want to make that clear. I couldn't tell what the minutes we're referring to. Thanks.
No, we're talking about the minutes from the April twelfth meeting where we had two council members absent, not the minutes from the twenty ninth, which was the IS M D vote.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, there's no other comments or or corrections. I will take a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve. My second.
Any more comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Council member Hefte.
Aye.
Council member Haskell.
Aye.
Council member Taylor.
Aye.
Vice mayor Wernikoff.
Aye.
Mayor Alfs.
Aye.
Item four B. Take a motion to approve?
I moved to approve the warrant list.
Second. Okay, is there a public comment on the warrant list, item four B? Seeing none, I will take a roll call vote, please.
Council member Hefte.
Aye.
Council member Haskell.
Aye.
Council member Taylor.
Aye.
Vice mayor Wernikoff.
Aye.
Mayor Alfs.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item four C, you wanted to, the resurfacing project.
Oh, I had the fees.
Oh, sorry, I'm on.
I had no questions on the repayment.
So while we're here, any questions or comments from the council on item four C, the street resurfacing? Okay, I see none. Any public comment on item four C, the street resurfacing? I do not see any there either. Okay, I will take a motion to approve item four C. It's no move.
Second.
Okay, movement seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Council member Hefte.
Aye.
Council member Haskell.
Aye.
Council member Taylor.
Aye.
Vice mayor Wernikoff.
Aye.
Mayor Alfs.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Item five A is the seat is the annual CPI and salary schedule. I believe this will be Cindy. Oh, I'm sorry. I totally missed that. Yeah, I'm sorry. We are on item. I apologize. I skipped over it. We are on item three A now, which is the public hearing on the annual fee update. I apologize. I'm used to going straight to consent. Okay, item three, town finance director Cindy Rivers will be presenting on that. Cindy, please go ahead.
Hello? Good evening, mayor, council, and members of the public. Tonight, we bring forward the annual update to the town's master fee schedule. The town's municipal code authorizes the town council to establish the fees associated with applications and permits processed by the town. These fees are to be adjusted annually on July first of every year by the percentage increase or CPI as established by the United States Bureau of Labor and Statistics. The upcoming, the adjustment for the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four will be calculated at five point three percent and will be applied to all fees listed in the master fee schedule with the exception of recreation classes as offered through the town's recreation class program. Update process provides for regular evaluation of fees charged by the town to ensure that the town is in line with impacts of inflation and rising costs of doing business as a local government. As specified in the town staff report on page three of the council packet, please note that the CPI increase was also applied to planning hourly fee, bringing this rate from two hundred and twenty one dollars to two thirty three per hour. The increase to the town attorney's planning and entitlements applicant deposit hourly rate from three twenty five to three seventy five. The CPI increase was also applied to facility rentals, including the community hall, kitchen, activity rooms, and fields as maintenance costs of these facilities continue to increase. Additional language was included at the end of each department section for clarity as it relates to supplemental services, deposit accounts, and calculating hourly rates for staff and planning entitlements. Per page twenty nine of the packet as an example. Additionally, any changes to the master fee schedule have been indicated in red. I did also want to note that a future revision may be necessary in light of the recent announcement of resignation by the town attorney. The staff report had already been prepared prior to this announcement. At this time, I'd like to just open it up for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions from the council on the fee update? Now, Mary, any?
Um, I just had one sort of general question. Are there fees that we actually want to reduce to support and encourage a particular activity? I mean, I understand you're just sort of multiplying everything by the CPI, but I mean, what's our method for actually setting the kind of base fee that these increases are coming off of? I'm thinking of things like tree removal, particularly like the flammable five. It strikes me as this is the kind of things we want to encourage, and we've done that with solar and stuff. So I I guess the only real question I have is what's what's our process for setting fees in addition to just this sort of CPI increase?
So typically, the fees are set by a nexus study. So then I I I'm going to refer to Howard or to Cara to to clarify the timing of when the last time that happened, but that's when these fees were set, and then annually they're adjusted by CPI.
And the the nexus study, part of the part of the goal is to get this recovery of of our costs for doing those various services. And so, I mean, I I see your point, and we typically sort of, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we typically sort of adjust the cost to cover roughly sort of the the time and and whatever staff time particularly takes to to perform the services.
Sure. And I mean, I think that's sort of the general philosophy for the fees we charge, but I mean, like solar permits, I'm I'm guessing that we're we're losing money on solar permits because they're quite low compared to other places. Maybe we're not, but I mean, we don't have to get into all the details. It was more, I was just curious, is there a time and a place where we could review our fees and say, you know, these are fees we want to encourage?
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's, I don't know when we're due for another nexus study.
I I don't know off the top of my head. The nexus concurrent nexus study was done quite a number of years ago. Gosh, maybe seven years ago. Basically, we just added if it's something that if the council is interested in, that we can get tasked in looking into something like that. And when we do the next nexus study, we can look into those items too that we do want to encourage in those fees.
And is that a requirement? I mean, if if we wanted to change one fee, we have to do an entire nexus study, or is it just it's a good idea to periodically do a nexus study? I'm just trying to understand the general process.
Yeah, so just in terms of terminology, we for cost recovery fees, we we typically call that a cost of service study. A nexus fee is something that's development related, and it's sort of a different animal. Cost of service studies, most cities are done every five to seven years. We have not done one recently in Portola Valley for two reasons. Number one, they're expensive, and number two, they're extremely resource intensive. We have, in my experience, lowered fees to incent certain projects, and that just is sort of done on an ad hoc basis, and in the general fund, you'd have to subsidize those expenses. And so that's probably what happened with solar permits. I I wasn't around when when that particular fee was was established, but it's very likely that it was lowered in order to encourage them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other, Judith, you have a question?
No, they were answered. Thank you.
I don't think I have any question either. Are there public comments on this item? Yes, Rita Combs, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for taking my comment. Yesterday, I attended the town finance committee meeting. And you know, for us to be raising fees on the residents when we don't have our current books balanced and just only recently did the twenty twenty audit and not the twenty twenty one audit to our outside auditors. And, you know, it's just really hard for someone that, you know, if your own town home finances, you're going to raise fees, but you don't know how much money you have in the bank, and you don't know how much commitment. It's just, you know, we we're a really incredible town, and we we really have to be a a little more fiscally responsible. And I know the town council has a fiduciary responsibility for that fiscal responsibility, and it's just really hard to hear that we're raising fees once again on the town residents, you know, the sheriffs. The sheriff's contract is going to be up almost a million dollars. That's going to be approved. We're we're burning our reserves and and when it was suggested at the last finance committee that there'll be a an audit committee to follow up and oversee the process of getting these audits done, the the past ones and possibly future ones on a timely manner. In the meeting yesterday, that was not moved forward. And, you know, the residents, I know the staff is working hard. The residents are willing and they want to help move this forward. You know, we are all committed to this town. We love this town. I know the staff loves this town, but please let us help. And, you know, don't charge us more money until we figure out how much money, what's happening with the money that we've already given to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. David Cardinal.
I looked at all their fee increases, and I think they're super reasonable. They're like five to ten percent, and inflation is five to ten percent, and actually hiring people is more. So I honestly don't understand any whining in the sense that it's not money people are giving the town. It's people, money are paying the town for services. And they look great to me. I'm all for paying attention to where the money goes or this or that, but we want these services. We want planning, want to be able to build houses, want to be able to rezone or whatever it is on our property. And that's what this money is for. So I I don't know. I think it's a slam dunk or to please don't anybody give me the warrior score, but I think it's a and a layup. Wait, no, no order score again. But I I think it's really reasonable that we raise our fees to match the costs that we face in providing the services. I I don't see how that has anything to do with anything else about the greater politics of the town or anything. We're spending more to provide services that we charge people for. So we should raise the amount we charge them. That's kind of, you know, business-ish one oh one. Thank you.
Thanks, David. I just want to point out a few people here in the schoolhouse who cannot be at home watching the game or taping it, so please don't refer to the score of the game during the meeting. Thanks. Christie Corley is up next. Christie, go ahead, and no game updates, please.
No, I'll be watching it later, too. All right. I just didn't see any land use rental fees that Portola Valley owns and that is renting out, so maybe you could clarify that. And it's an opportunity to bring in revenue. Thanks.
Thank you. Carolyn Vertonghen is up next. Carolyn, go ahead.
I'd like an answer.
Can we follow up with you on offline, Christie? I'm not sure I understood the question, but we'll we've got it, and we'll follow up. Carolyn, go ahead. Yes, seven five.
Thank you. Yes, there is a delay, as as many residents have said. So thank you for allowing our comments. I agree with most of what the residents have said so far. We are concerned about the finances of our town. And I'm not going to repeat what they said. I would like to pay attention to page twelve or eighteen on this report. It was my understanding that the town was willing to help residents build more ADUs and a junior ADUs, and I don't see that reflected in this timetable. You know, we have also asked to be a little more transparent. Yesterday at the finance committee, we found out that we will not see the individual invoices, which I thought was promised by the town manager, but I might be wrong. So we would like to see a little more details when the warrant list is proposed, and that includes attorney fees. You know, we would like to know where this is going to. So we have a little better understanding of where of our taxpayer dollars is going, especially when we're behind two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Karen. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Karen Vatra. I just wanted to clarify something that Craig Taylor brought up about removing the flammable five. If you look on the town's website on tree removal, it only applies to a specific set of trees that are native trees, like redwoods and oaks, and, you know, the standard stuff that we care about, and only ones of a certain size. So today, this isn't really a non-issue. And today, you can for without, you do not need a permit to remove any of the flammable five. So you can go ahead and do that on your own and do not need to contact the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, I see no other hands raised on Zoom. Anyone in the schoolhouse? Okay. Discussion of the council. Anyone want to start?
I was at the finance committee yesterday, so I think you should follow up on the land use rental fee question separately because I don't know enough about it. But I don't think that the this fee schedule was intended to operate in the same way, right? That's a separate discussion item that we should address in the future in terms of revenue resources. I think that was how it came up in that meeting. Yeah, and probably the Zott's parking lot is that town owned property that's rented. So that's the example that came up, and it's just in the spirit of identifying revenue resources for the town going forward. Yes, exactly. And that was oh, and and on the individual invoices, we're still working out a way to get more detail. we're still working out a way to get more detail. And Cindy can probably comment more knowledgeably. Maybe not at the invoice level, but more detail for the warrant list is possible. We just have to figure out what that means is what I heard yesterday. Is that accurate?
Yes, so just to clarify, with the Open Gov system, there is the ability to see granular level as far as charge codes and what they're associated with in terms of expenditures. There will not be an ability to see actual invoices. So it'll just be transactional detail. So that will be part of the transparency once it's launched. Currently, we have reports that we have presented in the past to council reflecting budgetary updates, quarterly updates. Those are static reports, so they are not updated on a regular basis. We hope at, at the time when we release the transparency portal that that will include the nightly updates through the Open Gov system and will allow that granular detail.
Thank you. Do we have any ETA for that, that one? Or is that for the future?
Yes, for the future.
And just to clarify, some of this is sort of Open Gov is trying to deliver services to us. Is that, I mean, these are things we're asking from them and it's just taking time for them to implement?
Correct, correct.
If there's no other comment, a motion to approve item 5A.
I'm going to approve item 5A.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hafdi?
Hi.
Councilmember Hasco?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Hi.
Mayor Alfs?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up then is item 5A, annual CPI and salary schedule. This is also Cindy. Cindy, go ahead.
Again, similar to the public hearing item discussed tonight, the annual adjustment to the salary schedule, as included in the town's compensation plan, is performed on an annual basis. The adjustments are based on the February CPI Consumer Price Index for the San Francisco Bay Area at 5.3%. This adjustment is applied to all salary ranges to provide competitive salary rates for current and future positions and in an effort to retain existing employees and attract future hires. Additionally, I did want to note that the approval of this adjustment does not automatically grant salary increases. Any merit or salary increases are granted either by town manager or by the town council. Cost of living adjustments or COLAs are typically recommended as part of the annual budget process. At this time, I'll open up for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Mary?
Greg? I'm slightly confused about the relationship between approving a CPI and then you're saying that there's COLA adjustments. I mean, my understanding is that COLA and CPI are pretty closely related, certainly not additive.
Correct. So this is not in conjunction to any, any granting of COLA adjustments. The, the rate is similar, but by way of approving the adjustment to the ranges does not grant any COLA adjustments. That's performed through the budget process.
Okay, and it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't give them a CPI adjustment either. I mean, all we're doing is just changing.
Exactly, yes.
And the chart doesn't indicate what the old numbers and the new numbers are like your P chart did. So the way of interpreting this is just, I'll just pick the town clerk, that those numbers are after giving effect to 5.3% increase.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Sarah?
Nothing, no question.
Okay. Is there a public comment on this item? Okay, I do not see any hands raised from the public. So I'll pull it back to council for discussion and/or a motion. I'd make that motion. Five. There are second. Move Taylor, second to Hafdi. Any, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hafdi?
Hi.
Councilmember Hasco?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Hi.
Mayor Alfs?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item 6A. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
A, which is a study session on the sheriff's contract. Again, this is a study session. No decisions are being made. This is an introduction, especially, well, for all of us to discuss kind of the new contract and.
Thank you, man. I just wanted to provide a short, quick background first. The sheriff provides our policing service since incorporation in town. We have a five, currently have a five-year agreement with them that comes due at the end of this June. We're going to be providing some background info. Captain Mark Myers is here with us and also Stacy is going to be with us online. There is, for the memo, there is an $800,000 associated increase concerning a full cost recovery on items that normally were not included in the past before, which I'll let Mark get into. What we want to do right now is have the council understand the scope, the increases and what our options are and to formulate questions and potentially continue with a series of meetings, one or two meetings here in the future. So at this time, we're going to let Mark go through pretty much what we have now. What we're going to have, the contract between what was before, what is now, comparing the services, making sure that the services are consistent. And also to provide some data on citations and calls and investigations that they've had to provide all that information. I also want to acknowledge that this, this is, the, the cost increase is setting. And we're going to have to determine options on how we're going to approach this going forward. Potentially, we will have to have maybe a contract extension. We may have to request the sheriff department for a contract extension if we don't have time because essentially we have a month and a half to come up with something by the end of 30th to decide. So it's going to be through several sessions. I think Mark, I'm going to let Mark and Stacy present right now. And I think if we can formulate some questions afterwards to ask Mark and, and discuss how we move forward with our current financial condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Captain Myers, go ahead.
All right, sir.
And thank you both for being here.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, members of the public. On behalf of Sheriff Christina Corpus, the Sammatah County Sheriff's Office, I'm acting Captain Mark Myers and I'm going to be going over the Portola Valley Law Enforcement Services presentation tonight. Just to first start off with your organization chart, what you currently staff and what you currently pay for. As you can see, you pay for me a quarter percent or a quarter portion of a captain. You pay for currently half a detective as well as half an admin sergeant. And then you pay for two day shift deputies as well as two night shift deputies. As you can see, there are several other things that you could pay for if you wanted to, such as a motorcycle deputy, a K-9, or full-time actually a patrol sergeant. But currently that, your full-time number of employees is actually 5.25. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, maybe pull the mic a little closer.
Yeah, that's what I was always sure the home people don't. I'm going to catch 22. I got to keep the screen so I can see it. So I kind of want to explain the, the staffing thing. In order to provide 24-hour coverage, our deputy sheriffs work 12-hour shifts. In our patrol team and our jails, we have four teams. Team one and team two are day shift and teams three and team four are night shift. So if you kind of look at, that's the actual calendar schedule we have there. So that kind of shows you how the teams rotate through days off and days on. Our day shift teams work two days on, two days off, then every other weekend, you know, flip flops. And our night shift works four on, four off. So that's kind of the rotation we have for our schedule with our patrol deputies. So that ensures you will always have one deputy on duty in Portola Valley 24/7, 365 days a year. This is just an example of a neighboring contract city that contracts with us and what they've chosen to do. So you can see they have, they actually pay for two detectives, motorcycle deputies, as well as community service officers, management analysts and whatnot. So just to kind of give you an example of what one of the other contract cities that, that contracts with us has, has chosen to go with. Now, assets that you provided at no cost. You have our detective bureau. While you pay for a quarter or a half a detective, I've never seen half a detective in person. You're always getting at least two or three, any kind of major crime scene, you'll get the whole detective bureau to be rolled out as well as our crime analysts. If you have a major accident, we'll have our major accident investigation team come. That's consisted of a sergeant and several traffic experts. You also have our community engagement unit, which includes our school resource officers. You also get regional DUI and traffic saturation enforcement. It's called the STEP program. And that's where on a quarterly basis, upwards of 20 motorcycle officers and deputies will go around to the different cities and jurisdictions in the county and provide mutual aid assistance as far as traffic enforcement, DUI saturation patrol and whatnot. You also have our emergency services unit, which encompasses our SWAT team as well as our reserve unit, our mounted patrol unit and several other Department of Emergency Management assets. You also have our media relations and PIO team if ever necessary. You have our air squadron, our K-9 unit, our search and rescue team, as well as, as I mentioned before, your SWAT and our bomb squad if ever needed. Now I'm going to have Stacy come on and talk about the budget and contract.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Stacy Stevenson. I'm the Director of Finance at the Sammatah County Sheriff's Office. I've worked at the sheriff's office for about 17 years. So I'm very familiar with the budget and the operations of contracted services. So I just wanted to go over some of the details that make up the budget and the contract. So for now, your current contract, as you know, is July 2018 and ends this June. And it is a five-year contract that had preset costs for each of those five years. Those increases, however, were not based on known cost of living adjustments. I mean, they could not have been because the COLAs were not known at that time. And the old and current contract, they didn't allow for accurate cost estimates because they were preset. So the actual cost compile year over year and they actually resulted in an exaggerated increase this, that we're discussing now for the fiscal year 2324 contract. And you can see that in the chart. I laid out what your contract payment schedule is right now for fiscal year 2122. The contract had the 1.37 million figure. And in the current year, fiscal year 2223, it was 1.493. However, if we were to look at our actual costs for those two years, based on the actual COLAs up to that point, the actual costs for last year were more closer to 1.8 million, which was a loss to the sheriff's office of 431,000. And the actual costs in the current fiscal year are expected to be 2.01 million for a loss to the sheriff's office of $520,000. So as you can see, this is what actually makes up the majority of the increase in the contract. So I know the $852,000 increase that's been discussed is, is a substantial increase. But we just wanted to reiterate that that 520,000 of that cost was actually due to make up COLAs over the past five years that were not incorporated because of the preset pricing. I do want to point out one little discrepancy also. The staff report that is part of the tonight's agenda mentions a 63% increase and that's actually a small error. It's not a big difference. It's actually 57%, but I did want to point out because it's part of the public agenda. In any case, so the actual total increase in the current year is 332,000 over what should have been up to this point. Go ahead and put it to the next slide. So, so going over the contract, what's changed? What, what's different this year? So I just want to reiterate, there's no changes in the service level. I know the contract does look different. It's been many years since the language in the contract's been updated. And I'll go into that in more detail, but there's no change in the service level. We will be providing the same exact level of service. All of the items that you've come to know and expect will still continue. There's also no changes in the staffing level. Mark did go over the staffing that's included in the budget. That's the same staffing that's been there for many years and that's not going to change. Unless, of course, you want to increase or reduce services. We can make those changes if you, if you request it. So what has changed is the format of the contract. It's been standardized, it's been simplified. You can see that the language has been simplified because our goal is always to provide excellent law enforcement service. And our, our contracts are standardized because we, you are one of many of our law enforcement contracts and we wanted everybody to be on the same type of standardized language, the same appearance of the budget. What has changed is the budgets will now be updated annually. So as you can see in the prior slide, because the, the amounts were preset for five consecutive years, that is what is leading to this substantial increase in prices this, on the sixth year here. And all of our contracts are updated annually. Portola Valley was an outlier because of the five-year contract term. It was an outlier in that the budgets aren't updated annually up till now. And we do want to get Portola Valley onto the same cycle as our other contracts. And so, so just to recap, the, the, oh, sorry. The, on, when we were talking about the formatting and why did we change the format? Because I know there's a lot of concern in the community or, or the council about the, the language in the contract is not very detailed or it just doesn't appear the same as it used to. So the answer about why we did this is pretty simple. We just, we always strive to provide the same service across all of our contract areas and jurisdictions. And we wanted that service that we do provide to be fair and equitable for every community that we work with. And the old contract format, as you know, it, because the language was different in very, in all of the different contracts, not just Portola Valley, but over time, the language was different in all of our several. We have about eight to 10 contracts for law enforcement and the language was different in every single one of them. The budget was developed slightly different. And so that way of doing contracts and preparing budgets did not lend itself to meet the standards of, you know, consistency and equitable services. So as you know, the language was vague in some areas and other ways, in other areas, it was very detailed. The costs were not detailed at all in a, in a standardized manner. And that made it difficult for our staff in the sheriff's office to maintain that sort of cost model. But it also led to many gray areas about how the costs were developed and, and if, whether or not they were even developed in a fair manner against other jurisdictions. And so if a question came up even to Portola Valley about how much does that deputy cost? You would not have been able to answer that. And we wanted to solve that problem across all of our areas that we provide service. So, so probably about five years ago, I think actually the, the change of this maybe happened slightly before that. But because Portola Valley was on several long-term contracts, this is the first year we're going to have an opportunity to switch Portola Valley over. But for many years, five plus years, what we did is in, in an effort to achieve the consistency and the fairness and transparency that we were looking for, we developed this new format that details the exact costs of every employee that you provide, that provides service for you. We developed this new format that details the exact costs of every employee that you provide, uh, that provides service for you. And, um, and we also provide very detailed, um, figures on all of the related operating costs. And so if someone were to look at a contract of ours. Um, and they wanted to know how much a deputy was, they'll be able to see that. And you'll be able to look at another contract that's in a different jurisdiction, perhaps, perhaps like, um. One of the neighboring, um, cities that we provide service for, and you're gonna see that exact same number. So if you looked at a deputy. For, uh, day shift, you're gonna see the exact same figure on your contract as you will on another contract. And so that is the fairness and the transparency that we were seeking. And then, um, and, and to speak to about the budgets being updated annually, that again aligns. And is consistent when, with how all of the other contracts have been standardized. And it, and it will ultimately avoid the wild, you know, exaggerated cost increases that you're seeing now, um, going from your five-year contract to this new contract. So on the slide you're looking at now, um, this is a copy of the actual twenty three, twenty four law enforcement budget. So the salary cost, um, that includes salary and benefits is two million twenty four, eight ninety eight. And when we work, um, these costs into the budget, these are known costs. We don't, um. You know, there's, there's not, um, if, if we have to guess too hard at a number, we don't incorporate it into your budget until the following year. So, um, what does this budget include? So the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four budget includes. The Deputy Sheriff Association and the, um, Organization of Sheriff's Sergeants. Those two unions, which we refer to as the DSA and OSS, those two unions received in October of twenty twenty two, a ten percent cola. And in twenty, January of twenty twenty two, so just a few months ago, they received another three point three percent cola as part of their, um, agreement. Um, in that same agreement in April of twenty twenty three, that's the month that we're currently in, the MOU states that a salary survey will be completed. And the DSA and OSS members will receive a parity to match them. To the same colas that other counties in our, our neighboring counties have received. So at this time, that survey is not complete, but we do know for sure that Santa Clara County received a twenty percent cola in the past year. And therefore our DSA and OSS will be receiving at least an additional seven point seven percent cola. So, and then going forward in January of twenty twenty four. The MOU states that the DSA and OSS will receive an additional three point three percent cola. And because January twenty twenty four will only give you, that's another six months. Um, it only, we're only charging you half of that three point three percent cola. For those six months. And then going forward, um, in April of twenty twenty four, um. The regular salary survey that's, uh, that is called for in the union contracts will be completed again. And again, that amount is unknown right now. Um, we do expect there to be a small, uh, cola increase, but we don't know it. And so it therefore has not been worked into this budget. Um, so, um, you know, we do acknowledge that the colas are significant. And we know that the high cost of living in the Bay Area has caused significant. It, it, a very significant hiring crisis, not just for our agency, but all the agencies across the Bay Area. And probably, um, you know, even in cities and towns, there is civilian staff, um, are being impacted by the, the same hiring crisis is happening. At least at the sheriff's office for civilian staff. So we do support the colas, although they are costly. But we support them because we believe that they're necessary to continue to attract and retain some of the, um, best employees that. We ultimately provide service to you. So on the next slide, um, this is the second half of the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, um, budget. The operating cost section. And I wanted to go into details about what each of these are. And again, this goes ahead and, you know, I want to point back to that. This is the transparency that we were looking for. To provide you with, um, that was not, it was missing from the prior contracts. Um, so this standard format, you'll see this every year. It will, it won't change significantly. Um, and the costs, um, will be detailed in the same manner every year. So, um, I just want to point out that most of these costs are a direct pass through from, um, county service charge departments. Um, really, the only cost we actually have much control over is that very small office supply line. Um, and I'll go through each of these though. So the uniform allowances are dictated by the employee MOU. So the DSA and OSS MOUs dictate what uniform amount is received every year. It's just taken straight from there. Office supplies, like I said, it's very minor. The majority of any office supplies that, um, are utilized by the staff that provides service. They're, they're normally just taken from headquarters control, but we do add a thousand dollars in just, just in case. Um, equipment maintenance is the next item. This includes all of the safety equipment. Um, for the, um, sworn officers. Um, it's, it's actually just a small amount. Most of the equipment is, um, assigned to a deputy at the time of hire. But this, um, the equipment maintenance covers, uh, very modest eight hundred dollars per deputy. Per year. And then this, the other item that's included in quick, equipment maintenance is the contract requests, um. Contract costs related to Portola Valley for the Axon body worn cameras, the vehicle cameras, the tasers. Um, the turbo data ticket pro enforcers, those are the little machines that the deputies carry to issue citations. Um, those machines also collect, um, RIPA data, which is a state requirement now. Um, it also, um, in that same equipment maintenance line also is included. RIM's data and, and a, and some of the data sharing analysis tools that are required by the, um. For use, uh, if the deputies as well as the detectives. And so those costs are actually allocated on a percentage base. And the Portola Valley shares about two point nine percent of the total cost. So, um. Going forward though, so next is the training expenses. Most training for all of our deputies is provided by the sheriff's office at no cost to you. But we do allow staff and deputies a small amount of discretionary training at about twelve hundred dollars per person per year. And so that's for additional training, like maybe they want to go on some specialized training or, um. Whatever they happen to need at the time. Um, and then down the list is the next item is radio and communications charges. This total includes, um, exactly just all of the radios. And some of the, um, CalNet telephone charges, but. The majority of this cost is linked to a per radio cost. So it really is as basic as how many radios does Portola Valley have? And there's a per radio cost that gets passed on to us from our information services department. And that's, um, a straight pass through to you. Um, I will make a note though, that the radio costs have, um, almost doubled this year, not just for Portola Valley, but for the entire sheriff's office. And that's because ISD is, um, needing to make some substantial infrastructure improvements. And so they do pass those costs on to all departments. Uh, the next item is information services charges. This cost is a direct pass through again of telephone charges, software, computer charges, those, that's the, um, the items that are used on the in-car computers. Um, any of the mobile like card data plans, those are all charged by ISD, uh, to every department. On a per employee basis, per employee and per vehicle basis. So that's a direct pass through from them. Um, and then the vehicle maintenance and replacement, this one is, um, again, a pass through from the Department of Public Works. And that includes, um, vehicle fuel, vehicle maintenance and repairs. Um, and then also, uh, vehicle replacement cost. Which is paid into so that, um, once a vehicle is, uh, reaches the end of life or end of service. Um, a new vehicle is purchased, but you are not hit for that new purchase price because you've already paid into that, uh, replacement. Um, and the next item is HR and risk management service charges. Um, this item includes vehicle insurance, general liability insurance, um. Bond insurance, key cars, risk management claims. Um, I do want to add that, uh, we do not pass claims on to the town or any other jurisdiction that we provide service for. So for example, when there's a, um, significant lawsuit that happened, um, from a case in Portola Valley, we don't pass those charges along to you. The way we calculate these risk management charges is based on our five-year rolling average, um. And we take those, that cost of all those claims that were paid out, and we spread it across all of our, um, all of our units. And so in that way, if there's a significant lawsuit, and there has been significant lawsuits within Portola Valley, um, that affected our costs. We don't pass those costs directly on to you. So you're never going to be hit with a, a large sum of a payout that happened. Um, and the next item is support services. This is again a pass through of costs related to payroll, tech services, records, property, um, training and recruitment. And this cost is calculated by an outside cost allocation, um, contractor who provides these services to the county of San Mateo. Um, I do want to point out that we do not charge overhead for staff such as myself, my, um, any of the administration. Um, and we never add any additional admin fees onto our costs. So they really are a direct pass through of exact costs. Um, so that is it. That's what, um. The operating costs is, uh, made up of, and, and I do realize the eight hundred and fifty two thousand increase is substantial. But again, with five hundred and twenty thousand of it approximately being, um. Really associated with prior years. The, the overall cost increase is about three hundred and thirty two thousand for this year. And that's mainly, um, that works out to be about twenty, I believe, a little over twenty percent, maybe twenty two percent. Which, um, the, is in line with the significant colas that, um, that the DSA and OSS has received. Um, so on to the next slide. Going forward, so, um, we've been discussing contract renewals because I, and we know the sheriff. Christina Corpus is very supportive, allowing the town to go through this approval proc- process. And she knows that it can be a lengthy process. Um, and she has agreed to execute a three-month extension to allow you additional time to review this, um, speak to the community. Um, go ahead and complete the rest of the study sessions that, um, I'm happy to be at. Mark, um, Captain Myers is also happy to be at. Um, so the sheriff has agreed to go ahead and do that contract renewal for three months. And she doesn't, she's just gonna go ahead and renew that three months at the current rate. So that actually gives you a three months, month extension that calculates out to be about three hundred and seventy three thousand dollars for the three months. And the, um, the remaining amount on the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four would be nine months at approximately one point, you know, seven, five million. And in the chart, um, I just did a quick calculation so you could see what that works out to be. Um, basically the total cost then ends up reducing to two point one million. Um, from the original two point three million that's gonna be, that was on the documents that you were given. Which, uh, essentially results in a reduction of cost of about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for the coming year. Um, so, um, I do want to also add, um. That we do not expect to see a significant increase like this in the future year. So I know that would probably be my main question. What, what's gonna happen in the future year? Are we gonna have another fifty percent increase? And the answer is for sure, no. And that's because now that we're moving to this annual budget that we discussed, um, you'll be getting the same exact costs. Um, not only that every other jurisdiction gets, but you'll get them at this in real time as the colas are given, um, each year. So you wouldn't see an increase, um, this substantial, um. So I can turn it back over to Captain Myers to report out on crime statistics, or if anybody has a question now, I'm happy to answer it or wait till the end.
So this is a, this is a study session. There's no action being taken. What I'll suggest is that if the council wants to ask questions of Stacy about the budget specifically. We could ask them now, and then we'll move on to the crime statistics, and then we'll take a couple of comments. Again, this is just clarifying sort of questions about this presentation, the details here, and then we will come back to, for a sort of broader discussion.
Mary? I do have a question. Uh, how did we get to an outlier type status over the last five years? How was it that we got out of line as a community?
Um, well, the short answer is that over time, um. Different contracts were put into place at different times. And at that time, um, the arrangements were made with the sheriff that was in office at that time. And Portola Valley has been a contract that's, um, probably, you know, thankfully, one of our longest standing contracts. Um, and so because the language was, um, brought in year over year from such a long time ago. Um, there was always resistance, of course, on the part of the council and the community to increase the cost too much or change anything too significantly. And, you know, that's completely understandable. Um, but over time it became more and more significant, right? The difference, the gap became more and more significant, uh, significant in the way that the budget was created and the costs were recreated. Um, but it really wasn't until about five years ago that, um, our team really sat down and. Um, just laid out some goals, like what did we want our contract to look like? And what did we want the service to look like? And like I said, the answer to that was that we wanted it to be transparent. We wanted it to be fair and equitable. And so that's how the new contract, um, layout was developed. Um, county council was involved in the process, so, um, they were aware that we, of our goals. And then in terms of the budget document, the way the layout of the budget document, that basically solved the, um, transparency and. Um, just making sure that everyone thing is, um, equal and consistent.
So I'm sorry, I didn't understand why it was unfortunate we, that we're such a longstanding, um, contract.
So over time, the contract language stayed in there, even though.
Cause we, we, the language was out. Okay, so I had another question, um.
Excuse me, um, with the mayor. So I, I, I think I have a slightly different interpretation of, of what had happened. Um, I do recall that there were some specific negotiations, in particular with county council with respect to the actual.
County.
County council, who was representing the sheriff's department. Um, and there were some language updates, um, certainly done at the time our contract was, um, put into place. At the town's request and, and we agreed to, uh, by county council. So the language has been certainly reviewed by county council. Um, I wouldn't characterize it necessarily as, as an outlier. My understanding of, um, one of the reasons why we're slightly out of sync is that at the time, the council, um. Uh, had asked for a longer term contract to guarantee the price structures because we're a small town and we can't have these fluctuations. And that was agreed to. And some of the other towns did not want to have that long-term structure and elected not to. So that's my recollection of what had happened.
Yeah, we were looking for sort of a predictable, longer-term set of costs around this. I mean. Not to, not that I want to save money at the expense of our, our law enforcement partners, but we actually did save quite a bit of money by walking in sort of those year-over-year increases. And so this is, in a way, this is kind of us, you know, sort of paying the price or, or, you know, being, being brought back to reality by the fact that we locked in a long-term contract five years ago.
Thank you. Uh, the other question, uh, that I had, I don't know who it goes to. Uh, but I suspect, uh, isn't, the county has a psychologist back, backup. Uh, a lot of the problems we get into are, are not necessarily a question of needing a taser or a gun, but more needing emergency, uh. Intervention in, in, uh, in psychiatric or psychological, uh, conflicts that may be better dealt with, with a, this backup of a psychologist. To what extent do we have that kind of service available to?
Yeah, ma'am, I was gonna cover that in the, uh, remaining part of the presentation.
Great, thank you.
Oh, Craig.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. Um, so I'm just trying to get a better handle on sort of, sort of big picture stuff, um. So how many, what's the population the sheriff department actually covered? Cause obviously it's less than the population of San Mateo County. So I'm not sure how to think about, you know, our population versus the total population covered by the sheriff's department. Do you have some kind of number on that?
I I don't know the number off the top of my head. Um, you're talking about the population of Portola Valley versus the population of the other areas that we cover?
Yeah, sort of the the total population that the sheriff's responsible for versus the population of Portola Valley. I was just trying to use it as just. You know, one way to be able to think about the our percentage on particularly, there's a bunch of these things that are clearly sort of spread across the sheriff's department, obviously. Um, and I'm just trying to understand, you know, like one at one point on the operations cost, you were talking about two point nine percent and I was just trying to. Get back into some of those numbers by um a population measure.
Sir, I can uh, I did it one night roughly. If you take all of our contract cities and this is on uh. It was Wikipedia, cause I had to get all the populations of all the unincorporated areas. And I think at one point, it was roughly, and this is. Just off the top of my head, I think with the contract cities and the the total unincorporated populations that we serve, it was like maybe sixty to sixty five thousand. Uh, maybe seventy. Total.
Okay, interesting. So so for a county that's roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand, you're saying that. The sheriff actually covers about seventy thousand?
That was my rough. If you figure roughly, uh, you know, Woodside is roughly five or six thousand. Contracts to do San Carlos and and Millbury just say roughly uh thirty each. It might have been actually more around like seventy five thousand now I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
But.
So I guess that's a number Stacy that I would be, because presumably that somewhere in your calculation, you have some way to be able to sort of divide up. On a population percentage or or some some way to sort of apportion those costs.
Yeah. Well, I would just add that we don't apportion costs by population for a lot of reasons. Um. There's a lot of areas that are just very densely populated, but that doesn't mean um it covers more like. So there could be, you know, ten individuals living in a home versus in other areas, it's very sparsely populated. So. Um, there's that aspect, but also um. The the costs that are allocated across are um are dependent on. A lot of our costs are on a like a per deputy or per, like we don't charge like per household or per individual in there. Um, and so the costs are for providing service by a deputy. And so a lot of the costs are apportioned by per employee or per. Um, per deputy. Um, I would also just say um. The the you'll see this in a later slide from Mark. But um e- even going down to the response times, our response times would be faster in a more densely populated area. Versus a more sparsely populated area. Um, and also in a county level, they also don't um apportion costs by population. We do that in some areas on some of our cost um allocations, but um it just depends on the service that's being provided.
Okay, so then maybe the number I'm really interested in is how many deputies there are. I'm just trying to get a sense for. This apportionment. So you know, at some point as we dig into this, that would be helpful. Um, my next question was, if we're gonna be going to some sort of annual sort of review. Do we actually get to see the a- the actuals that are spent? It seems like some of these are kind of variable numbers and I mean, I understand you need to put something in the budget, but. Do we actually get to see the actuals and then, you know, either accumulate, you know, or basically have a deficit running?
Uh, there's not, there's actually not, that's because the costs in Portola Valley are only possible through the use of um. Shared resources. So for example. Under Captain Myers, he has deputies in um Headquarters Patrol and he pulls them. To go provide service in Portola Valley. Now, if that if that deputy is out sick or on a vacation, he has to pull someone from somewhere else. Cause he makes sure at all times, there's one deputy there because you pay for one deputy. Uh, but that deputy doesn't necessarily charge to one area because um he may need to pull from multiple areas. So it would be nearly impossible for us to. Um, provide actuals in that way.
Well, I I mean, like one example, when I looked through, um, you know, I saw that there was overtime. Um, and I was trying to understand if we have four deputies where the overtime was coming from. Um, so that it was it was that kind of thing that I've.
Yeah.
I can imagine that overtime is kind of variable depending on the need.
Yes, that's a great question, actually. Um, and so I'll tell you how overtime works. Um, so the overtime that's charged um in the cost of the budget is actually just a a formula. That the county uses to um. To assume that every employee is given, like, let's just say, one week of sick time and two weeks of vacation time. So that overtime that you're charged is um for the assumption that they will be off a certain amount of um days per year. And during those times when that person is allowed to be on vacation or allowed to be out sick. We have to call in someone on overtime because otherwise you'd have nobody on your streets, right? Um, the overtime that's associated for other things like callouts, emergencies, burglaries, any of those, you know, car accidents. We do not charge you overtime at all. So we might have a major accident on in Portola Valley on, you know. One of the roads and we call in, um, you pay for half a detective. But we need to call in like four or five detectives because it's a major accident. And we have a major accident investigation team and they can come out and spend, you know, anywhere from forty eight to. A week, hour, forty eight hours to maybe a week. Preparing the reports and taking measurements and doing some research and investigating the car and bringing the car to another lot to. To check everything, check the brakes, check. And that all takes time, but we do not call, uh, we do not charge you any additional overtime for that. So the overtime that you see worked into the budget is literally just the time that we expect. To allow employees to be off per year.
Okay, um, and then I guess that sort of led into my next question, which is, you know, as we're trying to look at this budget. And we've got a halftime deputy, which in theory sounds like twenty hours a week to me. Um, i- is there some way that we end up getting some accounting on that twenty hours? I mean. But if we went to quarter time, I mean, I I don't know how to think about this. So that's that's really the questions I'm trying to ask.
When you, when you say a um a halftime deputy, did what are you talking about the detective maybe?
I'm, I think, thank you, yeah, the D word, you know, yes, so.
Okay.
My apology.
No, it's okay. So the halftime detective is um based on what we do is we take all of our detective cases. And we have an entire, um, you know, we do an analysis um every few years and then we just so that we can. So that we can tell which um cases were attributed to which area. And then we basically charge you for that percentage of a de- detective. Um. In cases where the the cost comes in higher. We won't just automatically charge you. We'll have a discussion with you saying, hey, it looks like you're having more cases recently. The last two years showed that you're actually at point seven five percent of a detective. We'd like to increase it to that. You know, we don't do it just because one year is an outliner, um, maybe outlier. So you know, in some cities, you you'll hear of a big case. And of course, you'll have um a huge influx of detective time because they had to solve that large case. Um, but we don't charge it up for those one off. Um, but if it's a trend that we see over two or three years, we will have a discussion saying. Um, you know, the detective time is is not falling in the fifty percent range anymore. It might be more like one, one. For, you know, a whole, a full body. Um, I don't anticipate that happening in Portola Valley, but um the the detective hours and cases have been pretty consistent.
Okay, yeah, I mean, again, that's just what I was trying to understand. Um, so is the flip side true? If we had less hours, would we look at it and say, wow, you know, it looks like you guys are only using a quarter? Of a a detective?
Yeah, sure. We we do review it and you know, we we make adjustments like that.
Okay, um, and then I think my last question for at least for tonight, um. We obviously had a long term structure before and it just wasn't to uh, you know, nickel and dime you guys or or get you guys to come up short. Um, but was to get some stability within the finances of the town since. We are a very small town government, um, probably one of the smallest in San Mateo County. Um, and so, you know, obviously increases like this, which I I appreciate you're sympathetic to, um, are a big deal to us. So. Are there options for having two year contracts versus one year con-? Cause I I think if I understood what you're saying is. You were talking about this is basically gonna get reviewed every year going forward, cause you're trying to normalize this. But I guess the question I had was, are there o- other options for having say a two year timeframe? That basically do our budgeting?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, that's not um how we're um operating. I'm I'm not gonna say that will never happen. If if you wanna have a discussion with the sheriff about that maybe going forward, but um. You know, I am just as nervous when I see a, you know, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase as you are. I really am. I don't, I don't. You know, we we do, like I said, we don't charge admin fees or any of those extra fees. So, you know, we try to keep your costs in line. Um. So as far as making it stable for, you know, several years, I completely appreciate that. I, you know, I manage a huge budget and I know that's. That's a big um worrisome factor, right? But. At the same time, when we're trying to get accuracy, that's the part where it becomes difficult, the right, the further out the budget that you build. The more inaccurate it'll be. Um, because budgets are just guesses. So um, yeah, so we're just. Um, you know, we can talk about that and you know, and certainly I'm sure the sheriff will um, you know, consider that. Um, I wouldn't, I don't think we'd be willing to do it further than a couple of years, but um. And 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 also right now, because of the costs in the Bay Area and the costs of salaries, it's been pretty volatile. Um, and you've probably seen that in your town, right? Our um e- and even volatile between our sworn and civilian staff, you know. So it's hard to um guess out too far.
Sure, yeah, no, I totally appreciate that. So, listen, thank you. This was very informative. I appreciate your time.
No problem.
Okay, uh, first, we thank you. Um, you're important to our community. We see you around and. We really appreciate uh the long term history here. Um. It is, however, quite upsetting to see uh eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase year to year. Uh, breaking that down for me, if you could please help me understand, um, I missed it, I'm sorry. Uh, out of the eight hundred and seventy thousand ish. Did I hear correctly that that's partially to make up for a loss in a prior cycle? Or is that all to cover this upcoming uh fiscal year?
Yeah, it's not really to make up um a loss. Mark, would you mind backing up to the slide seven, I believe it is? Um, it's not, we would never go back and charge you in arrears. That's just not how the sheriff operates, but um. But I, what I was pointing out in this slide is that um, how did we get to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And and you can see, um, just like in the prior question that I just answered, the further you go out, go out on a contract. This one was five years. Um, and what you're looking at on the chart is year four and year five. So the further you go out, the more inaccurate it becomes. And so what I was pointing out on this slide is that by year four. Um, you were about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars off of the actuals. And by year five, you were off by five hundred and twenty thousand of the actuals. And so now we're talking about basically what would be year six, right? The the new contract. Um, we wouldn't go back and charge you the five hundred and twenty thousand, but I'm saying out of the eight hundred and fifty thousand of the increase. Five hundred and twenty thousand was from years one through five that are passed already.
I don't, I don't understand that. Um, I, if what you're saying is. Looking forward, we know or we can reasonably predict that there is five hundred and twenty thousand at a minimum. That's gonna be incremental next year. Maybe I understand that, but um, i- is that what you're saying?
Um, no, I'm saying. When you're answering the question about why is it such a high increase, it's because. You're talking about an increase and increase is basically what was your last. Payment amount, which is the one point four nine million. And what is your new payment amount? That's, it's just the difference between those. And the difference is large because in this new year, we're setting the costs as they are now, as we expect them to be in twenty three, twenty four. And that's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than they were last set.
Okay, I I think I get the gist of it. Um, so. But aren't we just moving from a fixed price cost to a cost that reflects increases? I mean, this is a different type of contract. It's not inaccurate. It's a different contract, right? Which is fine. And and if that's what we need to. Reset to, but I don't think there's been an inaccuracy. I think there is, okay, what what are the terms you're gonna be calculating the payments on going forward?
Yeah, no.
Right?
Yeah, I didn't ever mean to, it's imply that um. You know, the sheriff's office was being cheated or there was an inaccuracy. That's not at all what I meant. Um, the contract was built with an understanding at the time and um, and I completely appreciate that. What I'm saying is now, um, when we go to this new contract, it does cause a large increase.
Sure, sure. Um. The old contract had an exhibit on it that headline items about what we got for our money. Um, the new one does not so much. It's about who, not what.
Right.
Um, and that frankly makes me uncomfortable because the more you increase. The cost, the more I'm gonna wanna know why. And what you're saying is, it's not gonna be just cola. It's gonna be an allocation across jurisdictions that operate very differently. Uh, than than we do. So is there an ability in the future as we do another study session? To have a better understanding for what it is that we are going to get. So for example. I appreciate the initial slides, but there was a a slide that said you get all this for free. And then we have the overtime, which you explained and that that's very helpful. But I am nervous that I don't know what we're getting into without something that itemizes what it is we get. So why did the new contract omit that, which would have been a nice toe hold to have? At least we knew these are in. Right? I I don't know if that's possible, but that would be helpful.
Yeah, I know some, I mean, the old contract had like, uh, you know, as part of our law enforcement services, it will be transport suspects to county jail. But I mean, it's kind of like, that's like a given under, you know, providing you guys law enforcement services. It kind of. Had some things that, like I said, your service isn't gonna change at all. You're still gonna get the great service you get. We just, some of the. Burbage in here kind of can be covered under the general law enforcement services, you know.
May- maybe we can do it the other way then. Um, what would be extra? Like, like, it would help me to understand, okay, if we're gonna budget on this. More more cost related or increasing cost basis. Then what is it that would be like a leap, a whole new bucket of something, if there is anything? And and this is an open question because I don't really know. And we'll probably get educated by you tonight and then again, another time. So it'll be a little bit of a conversation. But it really would help me to understand what's gonna be, I mean, the contract has changed. Line items have come out and I wanna know. A- and a lot of our charges are based on an allocation across a region. So none of that gives me something to go and look at. Okay, cost of living was X percent. Here's a ballpark. If I did have, here's optional services or non included services. You know, that's easier to do, whatever's easier. I I just looking to have a little more visibility. Into into what the services are and again, the more these contract. Costs increase, the more pressure we're gonna get. And I don't know if you were here at the beginning, but we get a lot of pressure to explain all the uh, the warrant. So. You know, I'm just looking forward uh to making those discussions more streamlined. And we don't have to solve that tonight. Honestly, we can. We can work on what parameters might be variable more than others. Um, but I, uh, you know, maybe we can park that one. Um. And. I I I do wanna say that the questions Craig was raising also. Occurred to me, which is, there's a fair, you say it's fair across the jurisdictions, but we're all a little bit different. So in that case, fairness depends. And, you know, what is the methodology behind the allocation of those? I don't need line by line, but I can't just. Live with, oh, well, tho- the equipment costs are gonna be allocated on a different basis than. I don't know, maybe s- another line item. It just seems very vague, so maybe we can get. Ed or you can educate me on what we're we're talking about as to the variable aspects. Um, and then the other question is. This is a real step function for us and we're gonna have to go back and look at our revenues, you know, and and we're 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 gonna pay. For this from um. Are are other jurisdictions getting the same steep increase in one year or are there flexible? Arrangements to kind of ramp to something that's gonna give you the right. Ability to pay the people that we we need you to pay. Um, and I'm very sympathetic to the the cost that your department is. Gonna incur. Uh, we're all feeling it, but you're particularly important.
Um, yeah, so to answer the question, uh. Other jurisdictions did get a steep increase, not to the extent. other jurisdictions did get a steep increase, not to the extent that Portola Valley did. Um, and the reason for that is there were, you know, roughly twenty percent in COLA, of COLAs in the past year, so those add up. Um, Portola Valley's is mainly due, Portola Valley was the only one that was on the long-term set contract, um, that's expiring this year. And so that, all of our other jurisdictions have been on an annual budget for many years. So they only have annual, you know, incremental increases. Thank you.
And just to clarify, your, the, the cost recovery you're using, sort of the calculations you do are actually, they're public. And I believe you, you mentioned when, when you met with, with Mike and Warkoff and myself, that, that they're actually, it's mandated by law. There's a legal process for that?
Uh, legal process for what? I'm not.
Sorry, a legal, I thought you had a legal requirement for the cost, like, like how you calculate the cost recovery?
Uh, no.
The operation process?
What I was referring to is that, uh, there's a legal requirement that we are not allowed to make money off of a contract for law and service, law enforcement service, and we're not allowed to, uh, discount it. Um, so to answer the prior question actually about, um, what can be done to alleviate some of the cost increases, it's actually beyond, definitely beyond my, um, decision-making, and even beyond the sheriff's decision-making. These contracts are actually, um, dictated by the county. So, I mean, if, if, uh, if, uh, I don't, I hate to call it a discount, but if a, a negotiated adjustment were to be approved, it would have to be at the county level.
Um, thank you, um, Captain Myers and, um, Stacy for being here. It's super helpful to have you guys here tonight to explain all of this. Um, and obviously for all your good work for our community. Um, my questions kind of are, are an extension of Judith's. And what's been hard for me going through this process is comparing the twenty eighteen um, contract to the current one, because the format has changed, and I absolutely understand the why as to that's happened. But for those of us who are sitting on this side, trying to compare the two, it's a little complicated, still a bit like apples and oranges. Things are pretty clear, obviously, in terms of the costs, and it's really helpful to see, you know, the slide in particular. Um, and the term and things like that, but where it gets murky is comparisons, obviously, as Judith mentioned, along the lines of services or insurance or, um, reporting, for instance. And what I was wondering, um, because this is a three-part process, if at the next meeting, um, I'm just going to say a table, because I love tables. But if we could have a comparison of like, okay, this is what the key line, the key content areas were and what the contract terms were for that, uh, in twenty eighteen versus in twenty twenty-three for this new one. Um, you know, I was just trying to do a, a quick comparison myself on a, on a couple of these, and, and for instance, that came up is when we look at reports, um, in twenty eighteen, there was a lot of detail there. It was, it said quarterly statistical reports with a breakdown of race and ethnicity, including, and then it enumerates five specific things. Whereas in twenty twenty-three, it says quarterly statistical reports provided upon request. So to me, when I read something like that, it seems like there's a difference in what was offered in reporting in the twenty eighteen versus what's in this one. And we don't need to get into the weeds of it right now, but it's just, I'm just bringing that up as an example of like how I'm trying to think through how things are the same. Some of them may be exactly the same, but which ones are different, a little different, or maybe a lot different, just so we can think through that. So that, that's more of a, uh, more of a request, I guess, uh, versus a question. Um, and then I guess my other question was, um, are all of your contracted communities moving to this? Is everybody using the same kind of template, so to speak, in terms of this contract? Everybody's moving to this?
They, they've already, they've been using this for many years.
Okay, we're the last ones. I missed that. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's, that is it for my.
Yeah, I do want to speak to something about the reporting and even the services detailed in Exhibit A. Um, and I completely appreciate that, uh, that's worrisome to us. The service we pr- provide is, um, everything you need it to be, because the captain's job is to work with the city manager and, um, try to solve the problems in your community. Um, so the details in Exhibit Eight um, haven't been in our contracts for many years. And that's because, um, all of those things are our normal, regular, what we call law enforcement. That's our normal day-to-day, um, duties. Um, so they weren't needed to be detailed to that level. But what, with that said, I, I do understand, like, it can be worrisome. This is a big amount, a big contract. Um, I'm not sure how we can, um, alleviate the worries. Uh, I know Captain Myers can maybe talk to that a little bit more. Um, but that is the reason that they were removed. Um, because it is just our law enforcement. We can talk about the reporting. If you needed a report that was like maybe at the end of the year and you had some certain thing that you needed and you wanted to request some additional data, we absolutely would provide that. And we're not going to say, oh, no, we don't, we don't do that. Um, and that happens to us all the time, you know, sometimes, um, the city might be applying for a certain grant, and they, they need to know like how many of certain crimes were committed in these last three months. We provide that. Um, so you wouldn't ever get it like, uh, absolutely, we'll never do that. You wouldn't get that reply. Um, so, but one of the reasons, one of the other reasons we removed the detail from Exhibit A is because you can imagine with as many contracts as we have, um, if Portola Valley wants a few things detailed in a contract, and then the city over here wants a few different things, and then next thing you know, it's very hard for, um, us to manage what was in which contract and questions would come up that, like, you know, it was very difficult because everything was a little bit different. Um, so, but that's just a little bit additional information. We'll provide you whatever, uh, we can at, at, um, the future um, study sessions, um, but I just wanted to add that feedback now.
Yeah, and, and I guess I just wanted just to, to clarify, it's, um, it's, it's, I, I absolutely appreciate that you guys need to have a standardized format, um, and that it's unlikely that, uh, you know, you can't have exceptions to that. What I want to make sure that we understand despite that is are there areas where there's differences between what was provided in twenty eighteen versus what is in twenty twenty-three, regardless of the template? You know what I mean? So I just want to, you know, for, for the next step, that's kind of going to be my area of focus, just so, so we're crystal clear on if there's differences and if so, where they are.
And when you say differences, do you mean differences in the, in the actual language, or do you mean like in, in the service that would be provided?
I'm talking about different deltas between what is provided, like outlined in, um, the twenty eighteen contract compared to the twenty-third, twenty-three contract.
Okay, yeah, we can put that in part, but the, the short answer is there is absolutely zero changes in the service level. There's no changes. All of the things that were in Exhibit A of the existing contract will still be provided in the new contract. But we can provide it on a little table or something, um, you know, something to share at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Um, I apologize for doing this. I hate breaking these things up, but it's been two hours. I, I need a break. Um, so we will have a five-minute recess. We'll come back and we will take public comment starting at nine oh five.
Yeah, yeah. I don't need another bio break.
Okay. All right. Thank you again. And I, I misspoke. We were actually still hearing from the captain on his rest of the presentation. So Captain Myers, please continue. My first, I just want to go over measuring some, uh, crime statistics, and this is based on our national, uh, incident-based reporting system, or NIBRAS, as it's called. And this, uh, covers, uh, uh, the major crimes. Murder, sexual assault, aggravated assault, robbery, auto theft, burglary, uh, larceny, arson, and domestic violence. But first, uh, each year, you know, deputy sheriffs during the course of their duties take reports. So as you can see over the past, uh, since twenty eighteen, it's usually around, uh, you know, a hundred and thirty to anywhere to a hundred and eighty-five. Uh, last year in, uh, twenty twenty-two, a hundred and thirty reports were pulled, and currently we're on thirty-seven. And those can be everything from a actual crime report to maybe a suspicious circumstance report to a fraud report. So not all of those are like some sort of typical crime. They could actually be a missing person or something like that, or informational report. So going over the statistics, uh, as you can see, this is from, uh, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, what, what is currently, uh, as you can see, uh, sexual assaults, uh, single, uh, one and one, and then it, uh, they had a second one in, uh, twenty twenty-three so far. No robberies, no aggravated assaults, of course, no homicides. I'm sorry. Uh, domestic violence are very low, as well as vehicle theft. Uh, unfortunately, as I'm sure everyone knows, uh, last week I was out here, two, two or three weeks ago, I was out here talking about, uh, increases in residential burglaries. As you can see, in twenty twenty-one, we were, uh, at nine. Uh, and we also saw a spike everywhere else in the county, uh, with burglaries. That year was pretty much like COVID's over, the lockdown has ended, and all the bad guys went out and committed burglary. So that was not, uh, unique to Portola Valley. Um, as you can see, now we've dropped, uh, back down to six in twenty twenty-two, and we're currently at, uh, two for twenty twenty-three. And I know, uh, for the, those of you that weren't at the meeting I, I put on a couple of weeks ago, uh, I, I should have brought the slide. I'm sorry I didn't. I can give it to the, the council, but, uh, if you compare Portola Valley and like Woodside burglaries, uh, compared to some of the other cities in the area, I don't want to say, um, the names, but, uh, some of these cities especially, uh, there's one to the south, uh, similar makeup, uh, as Portola Valley. Uh, they were at forty-four, uh, for twenty, in twenty twenty-two, so they had forty-four burglaries. Uh, likewise, other cities, uh, similar size, uh, as Portola Valley or, uh, in Woodside maybe combined. Uh, we've all seen, seen, uh, double-digit, uh, of cases of residential burglaries in those cities. So, uh, while I'm not happy with, with six, um, you know, it's, it's at least a downward trend. So we did see that spike in, in twenty twenty-one, and we saw it going back down. Uh, commercial burglary, um, we did have the four in twenty twenty-two, but, uh, two of those were actually the same store got hit twice. That subject was taken into custody. It was the hardware store. They kind of did a smash and grab on it. And we were eventually able to locate that gentleman. And once again, he was a career criminal with a drug habit, and he was from Santa Clara County, and of course, when they caught him, they had stolen vehicle, a whole bunch of stuff. So he was taken into custody, so two of those are actually the same business that was hit twice. And then, uh, vehicle burglaries, once again, very minor. Uh, again, a spike in twenty twenty-two. I just can't remember particularly if that was like a parking lot or something like that, but, um, nothing's really popping out. But, I mean, as you can see, crime is relatively very low in Portola Valley. I believe we do a really good job, you know, preventing the criminals from coming in here, or, or keeping, uh, you know, keeping everything under control. Uh, and once again, this was the slide where I went back for that presentation I did, uh, way back to twenty eighteen. As you can see, the burglaries back then were eleven. And then we dropped back down to kind of the slower, single-digit range. And then once again, you saw that spike in twenty twenty-one. And then we've kind of trended back downwards. Citations, uh, traffic collisions and calls for service. So last year, this is for last year, we had, uh, uh, the deputy sheriffs assigned here issued a total of five hundred and forty-two citations. We had, uh, one thousand eight hundred and twenty calls for service. That's anything from a nine-one-one call to, um, uh, suspicious vehicle call. Uh, we had one major traffic, uh, accident, uh, six minor with, uh, one, one major with a major injury. We had six accidents with minor injuries. And additionally, uh, we had nine other collisions that had no injuries as a result of them. Uh, zero fatalities, uh, zero DUI collisions and no hidden runs. Now, average response times, this was polled, uh, our dispatches provided to us by, uh, Seminole County Public Safety Community, uh, County Public Safety Communities. That's a separate, uh, uh, division in the county. As you can see, in, uh, twenty twenty-two, we had the one thousand eight hundred and twenty calls for service, a priority one call, which is, uh, generally described as a, uh, like an act of assault or a, uh, on a, a person, not property. Uh, the average response time to that is, uh, we had a range between, uh, seven minutes and twenty-eight seconds to nine minutes. And that also includes like a residential burglary if someone was breaking into my house. I know the nine-minute one, uh, kind of pushed it up like that, and that was actually where there was a burglary on, during December, the end of December of the storms. And the deputy was actually on a tree-down call when the burglary came out. So unfortunately, he was a little delayed because he couldn't leave the roadway like that. And that's what kind of had that, that's what, that's what the nine-minute response turned out to be. So, um, that's, uh, very comparable to Woodside's response times, as well as other unappurted areas that have the same kind of geographic makeup as, as Portola Valley does. And I can work, uh, with Howard, and I can get you a complete breakdown if you want of the priority response time for all those calls for service. So that's available. I just didn't, uh, uh, average, uh, response time for a priority two to five call, which is anything from like your cold cold theft or cold, uh, um, you know, auto burglary or something like that. That is a range of three minutes, uh, or thirteen minutes and twenty-nine seconds to upwards of fifteen minutes and fifty-two seconds. And those are first calls where the deputy is just driving normal. There's no emergency lights or sirens like that. Now, community engagement efforts. So, uh, we have a really good working relationship with the Portola Valley School District. I was, uh, out to the both, uh, Porta Madera and Armandale about two weeks ago. We were doing a site survey with our school resource officers, let them know like what they could do to improve the security of the schools, whether it was cameras, fencing, uh, or any other kind of measures they can take. We had the, uh, town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago on the crime trends. We have our, our community engagement, uh, unit is working with the neighborhood to start up the neighborhood watch program again. So we try and always, uh, put a great effort into, uh, engaging with the community and working together. This goes to answer, uh, the question you had, uh, as part of the other service that you get to, that's, that you're not charged for. We have our psychiatric emergency response team, where we call it PERT. And this is a partnership between the sheriff's office and behavioral health and recovery services. PERT will review all mental health cases with the sheriff's office. We also do a follow-up engagements. For the sheriff's office, last year they had a total of six hundred and thirty-four referrals. Uh, Portola Valley, Portola Valley actually had ten referrals. Uh, six of those referrals resulted in the person being put on what we call a fifty-one, fifty or seventy-two, seventy-two hour hold. Um, but the great thing about PERT is, uh, uh, anytime we have any kind of situation where someone's dealing with a mental health crisis, we can use, uh, you know, disengagement, time and distance, and able to bring, uh, the PERT team in with their specialists. Um, and have a nice, successful outcome. We've had several instances where we've had, you know, suicidal subjects, you know, there, there, we find them with, in, in their car, parked in the car with a handgun, and we're able to use the PERT team along with drones and other kind of disengagement techniques to have them all wrap up successfully, and then get the person help. And that's the main thing that PERT does is it allows us to uh, practice our disengagement and as well as actually kind of closing the loop and getting the people to help they need at the end of the, uh, incident. Uh, big thing, coordinated response to fires. Uh, and this is what I spent a lot of my time with, with Jeremy, uh, as well as, uh, Cal Fire and the Fire Protection, Fire Protection District. Uh, we've, uh, worked very closely with the town as far as evacuation plans. We have trained all of our, uh, staff up in Zone Haven, which is major fire evacuation software we use now. So basically, everyone in the county, including fire now, um, when we're going to evacuate, uh, a zone in Woodside, um, the, they bait, or I'm sorry, Portola Valley, uh, both Portola Valley and Woodside are broken up into different segments based on, you know, structure, streets, whatever. So when we have to evacuate, uh, we work in conjunction with fire. So we have one system that, that we both can use. Um, like what will happen if we want to, like the, I forget the zone that the Sequoias is in, but if you click on that zone, it will tell you how many people are at the Sequoias, how many cars, all the emergency contact information we need. And then what we can do is we can alert the Sequoias that they are going to be evacuated in case of a fire. Um, and then it also allows us to, um, uh, during the storms, we're using it to update any traffic conditions or any road closures. So, uh, all of our staff have been trained in that. Uh, in the past two years, we've done at least two evacuation drills with the Sequoias. And then, uh, continually meeting with the town to go over the evacuation plans and, um, any, anything else we need. We've actually met with, uh, several, all the schools to go over their evacuation plans. Um, so it's just continual continual meetings. I, I had two meetings already this week with, with, uh, uh, Woodside Fire Protection District on evacuations, uh, to the fire, the threat of fire. Uh, technology, I know the town still has, uh, some older license plate readers. I like to sometime talk about maybe updating those to something more modern. Um, once again, we talked about our Zone Haven software. Uh, C three is a new search database we're going to be using that allows us to simply go to one place to search all of the resources we use, whether it's, uh, reports, license plate data, it can pull from our, our, uh, jail archives. So it's kind of simplifying the way that our detectives can do research and cases with patrol guys can do. It's simply a one-stop shop for maybe all fifteen of our databases. Uh, and then, of course, we have our sheriff's office app. Looking forward, like I said, talking out, hopefully updating the. Looking forward, like I said, talking out, hopefully updating the LPRs out here, we have Project Guardian, which is going to be going live very shortly. And that basically allows people in the town to register family members, maybe that have autism or Alzheimer's or other similar things. So they'll be able to upload a form with all the data we would need. So that in case that there's ever some kind of incident at the house, and when the deputies are responding, they'll actually, all the information they would need to be pulled up in their car. So they would know like, hey, I'm responding this address, the person loud noises upset them, so I'm going to not turn my sirens on, or I know that this could upset the person. So it basically allows our deputies to really kind of get a good picture of what they're going into, so we can have a good successful outcome. And then as well as our, the sheriffs started the community advisory, community, community advisors for responsible engagement, the CARES program. And that's really kind of helping build a bond between the sheriff's office and the community, there's a north, south and coast one. And that is just, I think they just had the first meeting of the northern portion the other night. And that is just helping build a bond between the community to let them go over any issues they are having in the community. How we can help out with it and anything that we can do to improve is a is an office in general. And that's all I have, also we have ten questions. Questions from the council first for Captain Myers on this last section.
Oh, I have several questions on your referral. In Portola Valley, how many of those are repeat?
I can get that information for you, I just had the breakdown of how many referrals we got, how many people were actually put on a on a hold, but I will find out that information.
It's just a period.
Yeah.
It will, it sort of shows how we're doing. But the the next question I had was, you talked about disengagement in your slide, and I don't understand what you mean with.
Oh, disengagement?
Yeah.
Basically. You come upon a situation where.
It's getting the gun out of the hand, I think.
Yes, it's, you know, we might have a suicidal subject, you know, and it could be where they're in their house. They've only threatened to harm themselves, where maybe in the past, we would like, we have to come in there and save you, we're gonna, you can't do this. And then some unfortunately, something tragic would happen, but this time, we don't press the issue of going into the house or anything like that, we disengage from the scenario. We won't try and talk to a family member, a friend to find out what's going on, still actively engaging with the person, but not putting that pressure on them that. We got to save you right now, we got to have a positive outcome right now, so kind of letting time and distance kind of be our ally.
Thanks, that's an interesting presentation. I don't really have too many questions, I really only wanted to ask the citations, there's five hundred and twenty. Can you give me rough breakdown on these speeding tickets or running stop signs, I mean, it's not a whole lot to do here, so.
I will get that for you.
The citations were.
I will get you the, I can email it to Howard tomorrow, I'll get you the breakdown for the citations, I just don't have that data with me.
Okay, yeah, no worries, yeah, no, I was just trying to get a little bit better picture.
Oh, yeah, I can I go back to my question, I just remembered them. What type of LPR are you hoping you're going to?
That would be for the town to decide, I just, I was just involved with town of Woodside, and I know the RFP process went with FLOCK.
So FLOCK is is. Okay, and then the other one was, to what extent should we get involved in community advisors for responsible? Can we do that, where, how do we sign up for that?
That should be on the sheriff's office website, I'll make sure I get you guys the link to that.
Yeah, just the simple question, PERT is it within? The overarching sheriff structure, is it complimentary, what's the relationship, is it a separate entity?
No, it's PERT staff, so like for any kind of crisis intervention training, all of our deputy sheriffs are trained. And we call it CIT, Crisis Intervention Training, then we actually have ECIT, which I've even been to, which is enhanced credit, it's just more up to date. PERT is staffed during the weekday by two deputies as well as two clinicians. But then they're also available for call outs on after hours and stuff like that, so.
Okay, so they're dedicated to law enforcement?
They're dedicated to the sheriff's office, they're not in one contract city or another, they are basically under the whole umbrella of the sheriff's office, so wherever we would need them. In any of the contract cities or the unincorporated areas, they're there to help out.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any other questions, thank you, that was really informative.
I think you told my question, so actually.
Okay, I have one more, sorry. How do you trigger PERT? In other words, if I come upon a situation that I'm not comfortable dealing with, and I feel like I need a psychologist. Slash with some enforcement, there's some danger to self and others, but I think it's probably. Has a psychological component, how do you? How do I say, we need help out here, but we need real help, we need, we need somebody to come?
Well, you would first call the sheriff's office.
It has to go through the, the police shows up.
Through the normal dispatch, you could, I mean, it could be called a non emergency number and a deputy sheriff, you know, might call you or come out to see you, and then you could kind of explain the situation to them. If it looks like it's something that's that's more than that deputy could handle, as far as that kind of.
Yeah.
Emergency response thing, that's where they would call PERT, maybe on the phone. They can find out if PERT has prior contact with this person, they kind of do a whole workup on them.
And that, what's the timeline on that? Minutes, hours?
I mean, it depends on how severe the the threat to the person is or the community. So I, I mean, it could be where I've seen PERT called out in the middle of the night on a on a suicidal subject that was, you know, at Burton Park in the middle of the night with a gun. They came, they came out middle of the night for that. Sometimes you can simply handle it on a phone call, they'll give the deputy advice, hey, this is probably what you should do, so they just have that extra knowledge that they can pass on to the deputy. As well as, you know, giving them past experiences of how to have a successful outcome. Okay, if there's, there's no more questions from the council, I will take public comment, and then we'll round up with the final discussion among ourselves. David Cardinal, your hand is up, go ahead.
Great, thanks, I got that unmute, are we good? Can you hear me okay?
Okay, great. We hear you.
Yeah, as somebody who's read a lot of these contracts and signed a fair number, I thought the proposal was very cogent, and the contract seems pretty reasonable. I get there's a lot of confusion, but my TLDR is, you were really smart or lucky in two thousand and eighteen and got a great five year deal. I think we probably owe that to the credit of Jeremy is no longer here and Kara, who soon won't be here unfortunately, and others who helped them. That was great, but now the sheriff's office says, well, okay, that was a free ride ish. And we're being asked to pay for the services we're actually receiving or we want to receive. Ninety percent of the proposed, their proposed cost. Is simply and explicitly called out as the expense, people expense. And that's if you think we're paying our police too much, or we could rent them from, you know, I don't know, Blackwater or somebody. Whatever, if we want less police, that's all fine, but I, that's what it costs to have the level of policing we want. And that's the first ninety percent, now the other ten percent is the proposed cost allocations that I think they've done a good job of. Trying to sort out with two point nine percent to us, like you want to, I don't know, it might be two point six percent or it might be four percent. I don't see fiddling on that last few percent as being a huge thing, although if people want to do that, that's fine, but. The basic contract, I think, is great, I think we have a lot of other priorities, so nickel and diming our police force. Doesn't seem like a great use of our time, it was a bit of a slap in the face to a well meaning. Presentation from the people who we trust to save our lives in minutes. So I don't know, I'm all on board for however much we want to spend, but I don't think we can chisel our way into getting more for less, thank you.
Thank you, David, Carolyn Vertonghen is up next, Carolyn, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Of course, everybody comes with different experiences, and unfortunately, I have bad experiences with our law enforcement, and I would like, I really appreciate the town council. To be, to ask all questions. The previous town council and town manager knew about the incidents and did nothing about it. Even with the new sheriff, and I'm talking about Captain Corpus. I would like the town council to really look at the contracts that have been established for every new person in the town. I would like to have a study session with all the residents who can express their experiences, because we have questions. Are we really paying for the losses of the county? We don't have jail, why are we supporting jail costs? Unless you can provide us, you know, details that really Portola Valley is contributing to that service. I'm asking you to. Get more questions or details on, on the details on the support services, the training, the information, risk management, school resources. There were also other issues, my sticky notes are all over it, because now we have to accumulate two presentations. Also, the correspondent response time. Because if you hear what the residents are experiencing, it does not. Correspond with a nice presentation that you got today. So I hope you will have another study session. I'm really concerned about the schools, and I'm really concerned the six thirty four PERT referrals. Was that really Portola Valley or is it the whole San Mateo County? We also have repeatedly expressed our concerns with the new population that that some of the advocates. And some of the town council members want to bring in. If we really are going to bring in homeless people, and you're telling us that you're not going to have an increase. We will need an increase, because there might be some other issues that we will have to cover. There's a lot of questions that have not been answered today, and I hope you will have a study session with the residents. So we can express our experiences of the last seven years or more after Mr. Monk's left. The representation for Portola Valley, there's a lot of issues that have not been solved. We have had investigations that, there was no investigation, there were break ins, there was no break, no report. We want not only transparency on how you want this contract to be paid for, we want accountability. And we want to make sure that we get the services that we get. When you went on the PPFT meetings several times, the sheriff, the person responsible for reporting the reports was not available. Because he had other duties, he was in Woodside. I think you got my hint, we want transparency and accountability, and you need the input from the from the residents, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Betsy Morgan Taylor, Betsy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Als, and thank you Stacy and Mark for responding when we need you and representing the sheriff's office. And fielding our our questions tonight. My question regarded what I heard, and that was that the new twenty three twenty four contract represented no change to our coverage and personnel. And I was referring then to pages sixty four and seventy two of the eighty four pages in our. Agenda package tonight, and those are the budgets, the law enforcement budgets for twenty three twenty four and the five year contract. I wanted to ask if you would help me compare what in the five year contract was one deputy for a day shift. One deputy, another deputy for a day shift that was shared with Woodside. One deputy for the nighttime, and a detective as needed, that's page sixty four. With the budget for this next year, total personnel being five point two five. The position count of two for the day, two for the night, a point five detective and two others. Two important others, by the way, so thank you for just sorting that out, so that I understand when you say it's the same, how how it's the same.
Oh, thank you, Betsy, we'll, we'll walk through that again, that's a, it's a good question, it is a little confusing, so we'll walk through that again when we finish public comments, so I'm going to park that for now, but we will come back to it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Rita Combs, you're up next.
Hi, thank you for the presentation, you know, for our personal safety in this town, we depend on the sheriff's department and the Woodside Fire Protection Department. We appreciate the information that was shared tonight concerning, you know, what has happened in the past couple of years. And what's possible happen in the future concerning this particular contract, and this is just seems to be the first conversation. There's been little conversations, but this is the first public conversation. And we thank you ahead, I don't know if the council has accepted the three month extension that was offered. But I know that Howard had suggested that earlier in the meeting, so I I'm just glad that it was said out loud and and hope it would be done. So that we would have more than six weeks to really look at this offer that's being offered to us. And as we move forward, just glad that we are starting this conversation. And would like to know more about preventive services that the sheriff's department plans to offer the Portola Valley community. You know, fentanyl overdose is a real problem in many communities such as this. Mental health issues are a problem, and I saw on one of the slides that another town is offered those services. And as one of the council members had mentioned, I thought that was a built in service. Not something that we would have had to pay extra for from the different court cases that had happened in San Mateo County in the past couple of years. So hopefully, that is something that we're getting every day now, not something that we would have to then ask for and pay for in in the future. And also for front license plate stops for more than just, you know, somebody in a pickup truck. And appreciate that, and so any kind of education, preventive education, community education would be appreciated. And I don't think I, I think I've seen that at some of our town picnics, a little bit of presence at those locations. But haven't seen it in in flyers or information that's been pushed out. And I've attended a lot of the bicycle transportation safety meetings, and at times, there. There's no representation because the person has been is busy doing something else, but it would be really great if that report that they were to give. Was included in the minutes for that particular meeting, and the residents can then look at what has been happening in our great community. So I know this is just the start of the conversation, appreciate your time tonight, appreciate the time of the council in really looking at this. And to see what we're going to do moving forward, thank you.
Thank you, Rita, Dana Breen has her hand up, Dana, go ahead.
Good evening, I hope I'm not being redundant, because I only got back on this call on the meeting an hour ago. I mean, it's my understanding that the sheriff's office. Had doesn't, has private offices in some towns, but not all towns. And PV in Portola Valley, the sheriff does have an office, and I'd suggest offering the sheriff. More of a cubby in the town hall building and either renting that office space that they do use. Or letting public works or someone use it, alternatively, the sheriff could sublet space from the fire department. I just, I now I just seeing that this budget so so advanced. I I think that you guys ought to look at that, it's possible that we could rent that office space down there at the end of the field, so. I'd also love to see more sheriff presence on the street rather than closed up in a private office, thank you.
Thank you, Dana, Vic Schacter, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Good, thank you, first of all, thank you, Captain Myers, I very much appreciate your presentation and the professionalism of your colleagues. And for the services you provided, unfortunately, as I mentioned to you when you came to Portola Valley. Anecdotally, we've had a very unpleasant experience with a burglary of my next door neighbor. In which, as I understand it, from the time the sheriff's office got the call, it took thirty nine minutes. For the response, which is a very sharp contrast to what you reported in the average of seven and a half to nine minutes. in the average of seven and a half to nine minutes. And I am really concerned about the quality of service under these circumstances, notwithstanding the overall presentation that you have made. And I too want to second the suggestion that the town council, before it moves forward and approves this next step or this next contract, gives the residents a specific opportunity to talk with you about what are the reasonable expectations with respect to response time and other matters that we have with regard to the sheriff and the contract. My other concern arose because in the case of my next-door neighbor, he contacted after he called me and I was out of town. This happened over the New Year's weekend about what to do, actually a neighbor across the street because the alarm had been going for a long period of time. There'd been no response. And when we got ahold of the owner who was out of state, who I happen to know, he got a bureaucratic secretarial response that was completely non-responsive for over two days, actually a day and a half before we could actually get a response from an accountable detective. So I know this is not representative, Captain Myers, of your intent or of the professionalism in the department. And I want to emphasize my appreciation of all your good work. But this kind of experience should not be repeated. And we still have not gotten adequate explanations as to why this occurred. So I would urge the town council, before it acts further, to allow the residents to raise these issues with the town council or its representatives and see if we can get adequate answers to improve the quality of response and service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vic. I see one hand up here in the schoolhouse. Rusty, go ahead.
Thank you very much for an excellent presentation. And I want to echo the comments of Carolyn Vertonghen and Vic Schacter about the opportunity the town council has and the sheriff's office have to take advantage of this extension and to have another study session. But I'd like to see the sheriff's department on the dais and I'd like to see the town council in the audience with the rest of the residents. So that the residents have the opportunity to interact directly with the sheriff's department. Building trust and understanding between both of us to hear your perspective and learn from you and for you to hear our perspective and to learn from us, I think is really important. I also agree with what David Cardinal said. From an economic perspective, good job. You negotiated a very good contract for the town, a long-term contract proved to be very beneficial. It didn't work out for the sheriff's department too well. And as a result of that long-term contract, it appears that our annual increase in cost was on the order nine percent, nine to ten percent a year is what our annual increase over the last five years was. But this year, it's going to be sixty-two percent. Our cost is going to go up sixty-two percent. And if I understand correctly, this year, the sheriff's cost year-over-year going up twenty percent. So we're at an inflection point. And that's just to maintain the services that we already contract for. But we're talking about building this town out. We're talking about adding a lot more housing in this town and bringing more residents to this town. We're going to require more services going forward, not less. And so as a town, separate and apart from the sheriff's department, we need a study session to understand what's the impact of our housing plan on these costs and what we're looking at. Can we realistically go forward planning that we're going to only need the resources that we've had in the past? And we're going to have costs consistent with what we had in the past? Well, clearly not. And I think we need to have a frank, candid discussion between the residents and the sheriff's office in a study session. So we can all learn about this and come together. We want to work with you. We want to make you our best friend. And we want to be your best friend. But to do that, we have to talk to each other. So I hope we can make that happen. I hope the council will facilitate that, not obstruct it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands here in the schoolhouse. I don't see any more hands here on Zoom. So there were a few questions raised there. A question about the difference in personnel, just reconciling the description because you and I had this conversation a week ago about just how many, how many people are here, coverage of deputies. Do you want to just, you want to walk through that, the two contracts and the difference or the non-difference?
Looking at the old contract that I have here, and this is the exhibit A. Yeah, yeah, it does say one day shift deputy patrols the town of Portola Valley. Another day shift deputy provides coverage of the town of Portola Valley and Woodside. And only one night shift deputy provides coverage for the town of Portola Valley. I simply think this is just old, old verbiage that never got updated. I can't remember a time when I started in oh-five here when we shared a deputy between PV and Woodside. And you'd have to have more than one night shift deputy, otherwise I'd be working every, every, every day of the week. So I just think it was just simply old verbiage that just never, never got updated or just kind of got glossed over and you know, probably from, this might have been verbiage from the contract, like who knows when, very long ago.
But again, this is just a conversation we had. It's that we have for quite a while had basically, there's always one deputy here in town.
Yeah.
And on page sixty-four, it says two deputies because basically somebody has to sleep. So every twelve hours they switch.
Yes, yeah, based on our, on our schedules and all that. And it's same for all the contract cities, all our patrol, as well as everyone that works in the jail. We have those, those four team schedules that allow, you know, two day shift teams and two night shift teams. And that is what our unions all agreed on for scheduling purposes. That allows us to staff everything twenty-four, seven.
So the coverage in the new contract in terms of actual boots on the ground in town does not change from all the services?
Correct.
And then, did you want to talk about the response time? That incident came up, I think that the
That's the thing, and I forgot. I don't think I did follow up with him. I will, Howard, do you have his contact information? Yeah, if you could get that for me, I could reach out to him. I pulled that call and I can go over the dispatch tapes with him and actually break down the timeline and everything. I understand his concern completely. Our response wasn't thirty-nine minutes. I just think it was a matter of perspective. Yes, but I want to make, I want to make sure he's satisfied with my response and everything, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to understand that better as well. I also just want to point out that there was, that the sheriff, Captain Myers and six of his team were in town April earlier this month, I think, right? March twenty-third, it's been that long, okay. Had actually had a session, face-to-face session with about thirty people from town. So thank you for doing that.
Of course.
Be great to have events like that a little more often too, as available. So thank you again for that. We actually have had some face-to-face engagement, which is great. So I guess the second part of this is just a discussion kind of among ourselves. I guess there's a few things. One, I want to just make sure everybody kind of understands the contract. And then we asked for some detailed questions, but we'll have to come back to it later. But just want to make sure everyone understands how the basics of this contract. You know, that, that, that three-month extension, we have not actually made a decision on that. We don't, we have to make that tonight. But it's just, we could talk about that. And then also just this point that's come up, which is we do need to think about revenue sources going forward. This is, I mean, this is going to become a, this expense is not going away. It will continue to go up. I mean, probably maybe need some breathing room here where we think about new sources of revenue to cover this and other expenses that are going to be coming forward. I don't know, or anyone wants to contribute, jump in on that.
I mean, do you want to, you want to defer the decision on the three-month extension or do you want to discuss it tonight?
I don't, well, I don't think it's agendized tonight, right? So could we discuss that specific item or?
Right. So this is agendizing the study session, so you can't take formal action, but I think a poll will, would be helpful so that we can start to negotiate that. Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, so I'd be happy to hear opinions on the three-month extension.
Yeah, I certainly think that makes sense. I think, obviously, as we've all said, it's a huge increase. We need time to think through it and all of the cascading impacts to the budget. And it does appear that it also gives us some cost savings. So it's kind of a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. I don't know, you know, you know, we're going into the budget cycle and we can get into more into budget at a, you know, within the context of one of those conversations, I'd assume. But, you know, between this, the post-approval process increases to staff, to attract new staff. We just have unforeseen. I think I've only been doing this for two years, but my sense is this is a very, very unprecedented budget cycle we're about to go into.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, we've, we've, we've been, we've known that there were some budget, some expense increases. Expenses had been steadily rising over the past few years and we knew we were going to reach an inflection point where we had to find new revenue sources. I think this increase is sharper than things we've seen in the past. So, yeah, we, we knew it was coming. I think it's coming a little faster and a little sharper than we Other thoughts on the, I agree with five-minute one call, but the three-month extension really does feel like, I mean, it's a very generous offer. I don't see a reason not to take it up as we continue with the budget discussions and try to fit this in with, with a budget that's, is going to be complicated.
Yeah, it needs more time. We, we need to take advantage of this. Things are going to be moving rapidly. It's an inflection point. I, I do think we should take a moment to get an understanding of where we are. I would consider the community discussion if that's something that the sheriff's office would be open to. To, again, take an opportunity for a discussion and make sure we're aware of all the services and all the support that's available and be intelligent in what we're, we're asking for. So I will look forward to getting some more granularity on some of these costs. I don't know if some of the comments were directed toward the potential of nickel and diming. That's not at all, to be clear, my, my view. We have a change in circumstances. We really need to understand what we're doing and how it's going to work differently than it went before. And that's my main goal in getting a fulsome understanding of that. Three months, we really, I think we need that time.
Yeah, so in terms of the extension, yeah, I'm all for the extension. It makes total sense. I do think we better, we need to make sure we're really clear on what's law enforcement. And I totally appreciate, you don't want to list every possible thing you do every day, but I would like to understand sort of the basic services so we don't get to a thing where we think, oh, we're going to get this. And you think, well, no, that's not law enforcement. So, but I think we can work that out. I'm through the discussion. I'm open to a public meeting, if that makes sense. I don't want to belabor this. I don't want to have five public meetings. But if the public can help us with some more insight into how to think about this contract and what kind of services we'd like to get from Sheriff and maybe even, you know, additional services. Certainly, we've got the issue as we go through the next eight-year cycle. So it's not next year, but, you know, we're, we're going to see an increase in population and certainly understand what that impact is, I think will be important. So, so in that sense, you know, I think we definitely want to go forward. The other piece I'd like to understand is, given we have to look at our budget, is, is there any way we could reduce this cost if we chose to? And I'm not sure we do, given, you know, that we have potential population increases and stuff. But when I look at this, I can't even understand if there's anything that we can do to change this. And I think going forward, that would be useful for me to at least understand, like, here's the range of things you can choose from. And if you're under a budget crunch, then you can go to the lower end. And if you're, you're like, you can find the revenue and you want to go to the higher end, you can. Right now, I just don't see that spectrum. So, so I could use some help in sort of understanding that. And again, my goal is not to nickel and dime. My, you know, goal is to sort of understand what this spectrum looks like. Because at the end of the day, we're either going to have to find the revenue to match this or we're going to have to find a way to reduce the cost. I mean, there's really no two ways about it when you're doing budget.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm for continuing the conversation and I just wanted to thank you for your presentation over at the community hall. It was really good and fulsome. And I think everybody got a lot out of it. I think there has been good public. Public showed up in droves and were interested and waving their hands. So I think that that process you've been really great on. So I would have to say I don't totally agree with Greg. I mean, maybe I don't understand equality and law enforcement as well as I should, but it seems like it's a one. You get, you get your product, you get your, you get your, you get your law enforcement product. And, you know, there isn't a first class and a second class and a third class. There isn't budget. But I maybe don't understand that. So I suspect you're offering us what you consider it's worth. And that's what we get, we get what everybody wants. Well, I actually want to respond from him because I don't know if that's true or not, but I guess that's sort of the way I, I think about our, our legal system.
I mean, I can always, of course, sometime, you know, give you like options on like coverage issues and stuff like that. But I mean, you know, that's
One deputy in town at all times is probably pretty much a non-negotiable. Imagine us going there, that's one, that'd be a pretty drastic option for cutting costs. I mean, the detective time, you know, I suspect more than we have now. Now, the captain's time is obviously divided. Yeah, I know what you're saying, but it's hard for me to imagine. A lot of this is based on specific people's time in town.
Asking for, and then that's what they're offering.
Sure. And if you don't have the money to pay for it, then you don't get it. So that's what we have to figure out. So, I mean, to me, the range might be something, and I don't, I'm not saying this is the right thing to do. I'm just saying the range might be we share deputies with Woodside, that we look at ourselves as one larger town and see if there's any economy at scale. I don't know if there are, but that'd be one thing. The other side of it is, we're looking at, you know, a fifteen-plus percent increase of, in population over the next eight years, and maybe we should have three. I mean, I don't know what the right answer is here, but I do want to be able to have a discussion and understand a little bit, again, like I said, what that spectrum looks like. So, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not looking for magically have you guys say, oh, we'll give you the seventy-five percent, you know, discount on, you know, the deputy. Like, that's not at all I'm looking for. It's more, are there other ways we can think about this sort of total cost?
And to defend my position a little bit more, I've heard numbers and one of the things that community is looking for is what this is, what this cost is going to be with the housing increase. And people are sort of throwing numbers out like, well, we need to, in fact, people who are very informed will say we will need another full-time deputy. Full-time in town and that that would be another million. So it'd just be interesting to have you guys sort of a little light on that, on that question, what, what it would cost to have another deputy. Well, is, but is that what you needed?
Right, that's, that's my question. So it's good.
Yeah, I mean, I think we ought to look at this as a change in how frequently we have these dialogues while we're going through so much change. You want year-by-year contracts, so that, that necessitates a constant dialogue in and of itself. And then with the additional changes we're contemplating, we really need your best thoughts on how to ramp and what working with other communities, what pieces we ought to assume we need in place and when. And it's not for tonight. It's not even for the next study session on this contract. But I really think we got to find a way to just have it be more fluid and not a once-a-year thing. And that, that's part of why I'm enthusiastic about a public discussion. And it, it doesn't have to be really formal. I mean, you might have your own further sessions to inform the public on given, I mean, just more of a meaningful dialogue is what I think we need.
Okay. If there's, if there's no more questions or items to bring up, I think we'll wrap up for tonight. We were planning to review the contract again next month and then either, well, we could approve an extension or we could actually we were originally thinking we were going We were planning to, to review the contract again next month and then either, well, we could approve an extension or we could actually, I mean, we were originally thinking we were going to try to finalize something on the end of June. But maybe with this extension, it seems like we might, maybe we might, we might go so far as to approve an extension next month and then become part of our budget discussion going forward or? Yeah, that, that sounds right to me. It's, it's, I'd like to see us agendize the extension. Yeah. And then use the time that we get to, Chris, to me, this is a much more complicated one, given the revenues we're going to have to raise, which is going to interact with the budget. So that'll give us a good time. So again, to Stacy, my, I mean, thank you for, you know, giving us the opportunity to sort all this stuff out since it, it is got a, you know, it is a big list and, and I understand what's going on. So thanks. Yeah. And I will also thank Sheriff Corpus for, for agreeing to that extension. Is there anything else you need from us or staff, Howard or Tara, that you need from us in terms of just wrapping this up? Okay. Thank you.
Very nice to meet all of you.
Thanks again, Mark.
And like I said, I talked with Howard before and like I'd love to sometime do, I don't know if it's at like a town picnic time or whatever, like an open house where we can bring all our equipment out, let you see like the technology, like all those associated costs, like this is what you're paying for. So, and we can bring out all the bells and whistles and all the toy series. So anytime, just let me know. I'll work with Howard.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, if you still do. Al goes wide. Sorry. And the car goes home. Poor Howard. Item seven is council liaison reports. Anyone have, well, I'm, I'm going to add one thing which I could not, not added in, it was last night, so I couldn't add it to the back of that. Last night, the fire district held their annual monthly board meeting. One of their items was, it was termed a first reading of the fire code. I actually went and spoke with them. It was not a first reading. They didn't actually vote on a first reading. And it wasn't, as I understood it, intended to be a first reading. It was kind of just them introducing it. I mean, we, we didn't, we had not seen the actual draft language until last Friday. So, and I, I just went there to remind them that we haven't seen the actual language of it. And so they're, you know, they didn't, they didn't actually take any action last night. They're going to come back to staff and work with us on sort of some, there, there are some nursing-specific, very detailed language that we, we need to, staff wants to review with them and we can. So that's going on. That was, that was a meeting I was at last night. And, and this is code versus ordinance? This is the actual, this is the 2023 code. Okay. Cause there's also the ordinance that Don's working on as well, which is a separate set of. There were two first readings of two ordinances in February, but those have been kind of put aside to finish the code. And they're kind of in the same state where they sort of introduced the ordinances in February and there, there may very well be some, I mean, there was several agencies kind of wrote letters. Well, we wrote a joint letter with Woodside Post, Sam Mateo County Parks and Rec and somebody else, Midtown. There, there's still, that's, it's, they're all kind of, the code and the two ordinances are now kind of in the same process where they're, they're sort of, they're going to work with staff here and staff in other counties, jurisdictions or other. Okay, great. Okay. Cause it did, it did feel like it was getting a little bit, was moving faster than the public was able to respond. So, so I'm glad to hear that it seems like. And there was a consensus that that's the case. And I think, I think part of it is the, the district sort of treats, I mean, they have a little different sort of idea of what, how they, how they, their process is just different from ours, looks different from the outside and it's just sort of work. The first reading meant something different to us than it meant to them. And then the other thing I might mention, just because you're talking about it, is if you could just explain very briefly the difference in code and ordinance, because I had to do that at conservation. I mean, because a lot of people get confused because they hear them and think they're the same and they're actually, in terms of what we do, quite different. Like, we're responsible for adopting code, but ordinance or something that's adopted by the. I'm going to, I'm going to defer to the attorney on this. Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. And, and. Well, is that, is this, are we, are we getting too far afield from the agenda here or is this a fair question? I just don't want to.
Yeah, it, it, I think it's fine just to do a clarification. Legally, in this context, code is the same as an ordinance. But in substance, practically speaking, the fire code is, is something that under our MOU with the fire district, the fire district is required to confer with the town before they adopt any local amendments to the fire code. Do you remember when we did our updates to the building code? That's the same type of process when we make local amendments to either the building code or the, or the fire code. That's the process that, that we go through. And so with the fire code, instead of the town having the sole authority to adopt the, the building code, with the fire code, the fire district in collaboration with the town adopts the code. And then subsequently, the town council will ratify the code. Nine out of 10 times, it's ratified if the town doesn't agree with the actual code or ordinance that is adopted by the fire district. If the town council does have the ability to either reject it or to amend it. And then that, that amendment would just apply to Portola Valley within the district. So the fire code is just, is a unique, a, a unique set of, of laws.
Okay. I guess, and, and maybe I don't fully understand. It was my understanding that the parts that applied to building, so that the parts that sort of are, you know, related to building and building code are the things that we get to ratify. But if there's vegetation ordinances, that those can be passed by the district without our ratification. So are you saying that's not true, that we can amend those ordinances as well? Because that wasn't my understanding. And that's kind of what I was trying to get clarity so that everybody in the community can understand if there's a distinction between these.
So that's, that's one of the comments or the questions that was raised in that comment letter from five separate agencies. Because the agencies had believed, there was, there was a working group of attorneys representing those agencies, that vegetation management requirements actually need to be adopted through the fire code process. Yeah.
So how are we going to get clarity on that? And, and I may be going too deep, so just even coming off of this, but I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands where in this public process they can get their input. Because that's the important thing is that people don't get confused and then miss their opportunities. That's really what I'm, I'm trying to drive into. So, I mean, this is all being, you know, the, the, the next step will be the fire, the, the fire district. I mean, they will, they will continue their process on the fire code and the ordinances. And so, I mean, people can't attend their meetings when they do discuss these. And they, they have now, I mean, the, the new code and the new ordinances are on their website. And so they are available to the public. People want to review them and ask questions. And that's a good point because I think some of, especially the, the Rui ordinance, luckily we end the fuel, or fuel break ordinances are going to affect people here. Actually, the new revised fire code is going to too. And so it'd be, I mean, I, I would encourage the fire district to basically go out and raise public awareness of, of the changes they're making. Because some of them are going to, people are going to, someone somewhere is going to be very kind of surprised and upset to see some of the limitations placing on them. That's my, my opinion.
Do we have any links on our website to point to their website? I mean, because it is not intuitive that people would need to go to their website to learn about this impending change.
Their website is very sparse. So it's difficult to find any of the ordinances on your website.
I mean, can we just say, hey, here's something going on or is that, is that an awareness then?
I totally agree about the awareness. It does seem, what I don't want people to think is that it's housed here. Because that's where a lot of confusion happens. So having a link to point to theirs doesn't, they're all posted up there now, right? The three? Or is it just the fire code that's posted? I know the fire code is. Okay. Yeah. So.
They're all there because they're all on former agendas. So they're, I mean, all if you.
On our former agenda?
No, no.
Theirs. Yeah.
Okay. So the, 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 the proposed code and the two ordinances that we're talking about are all, have all been introduced in, in board meetings. So if you go to their web, board meetings and minutes. So there are, their agenda packets are posted on, on the WFPD site, just like ours are. And you can go there. Well, maybe, maybe, maybe the wildfire preparedness committee. Post a, post a link to those three things.
Well, and also they can include it in there. They do those tips. Maybe they, a different version, the next version could be an update about that. That's a great suggestion.
And maybe Carrie can put on like the calendar when those meetings are happening. I mean, think about a way to just. Raise awareness. I, I don't want to get granular.
Okay.
I think the other thing I want to make sure, I, I believe this is, you know, there's so much confusion and I agree with you, code, ordinances, what's the process? And I think, you know, there's, there's two things. One, the code, my understanding is updated every three years. So this is like the regular three-year cycle that we're going through for the code. It's not related to the housing element or the safety element. It's just the regular course of events. And I think helping build awareness around, around that is important, number one. Number two, I think I've had a lot of conversations with community members in the last 10 days in particular. And there's a lot of confusion over the town's role relative to Woodside Fire's role. And I think it's important for people to understand that they recommend the code. We need to wait for them to put forward the code and then we adopt the code and/or ratify. And so helping bolster education and awareness about that process, I think, is something, you know, we can all be ambassadors for because it is confusing. The other thing is my understanding is the two ordinances are kind of on the back burner right now. Okay. So that's another, just so everybody knows, the fire code they're moving, you know, going through the process with, but my understanding is the ordinances are sidelined for now.
That is what I was told.
Okay.
The, they're, they're, the district is focused on, on getting the fire code through as quickly as it can and to put the ordinances aside, these two ordinances aside. Okay. This is what I was told by, by Don.
I was told that by Matt Mellon also.
So, okay. So, sorry, we've, we've got a little. Okay. Yesterday. Okay. Okay. Understood, understood. Okay. So we've got a handful. Does anyone want to pull any of the other liaison reports today? Sorry, we've wandered a little bit.
I want to explain and highlight something that we might want to consider going forward. On the Trails and Paths meeting, they've been doing a lot of work to understand a lot of parameters of the, the trails and paths. In particular, they're coming out with a new map. So before anything is finalized, and there are things like trails that exist, everyone knows about them, they're not on the map. There's a couple of new trails. So that's going to come around. And I did want to make sure that that got a legal review before being finalized, just to make sure if there are questions that we are attentive to those. The other item is that there, there's continual discussion, since I was on the Trails Committee on Safe Routes to School, right? The fact that you go up Alpine, the kids have to cross and then they go up and then they cross again and then they go up. And no one intuitively thinks that's a great idea, but no one has a better idea for solving it. And so they, they did want to have more maybe in, intercommittee discussion with the BPTS. And no, it's, it's always an issue. And then also just getting public input on where the concerns are or getting aired like, well, if we all perceive danger, would it be incidents after then? So I think in the future, that's got to be some type of topic. It might make sense to put that on once we know a little more about the Hawthorns project because my recollection was that some of those trail adjustments might open up. It, it'll either open up more trail solutions or it might create more trail problems because of parking. We just don't know. But I think looking at those together, because safe routes to school is a, is an important element of the town. Let's see what, when and how to be, all right, address that. We, we want to talk into the.
So, but, but I was going to say, before we leave you this last point, is there somebody who's working with Don Midtown? I mean, is there somebody that's coordinating? Because I know they're starting to have their, their study sessions on the Hawthorns. Okay. So then this issue of like safe routes to school is something that you'll carry forward with them?
We can talk offline, do this a little bit so I can get some more detail. But yeah, I've been working with.
And I think a member of the BPTS also was attending one or two of the Hawthorn's meetings. So maybe we can just check, check in on best ways to communicate.
Yeah. If you want to, if you want to give a little bit of liaison reform.
Yeah. First of all, I, I, it was the, the title was given wrong at least twice tonight. And I think it's really important that people be aware that it's not a study group. It's a, it's a discussion, a reading and discussion group about a specific top, topic. It's not taking in all ethical and, and moral problems with the town. It's just looking at the general plan as a document. So I, it's been extremely successful. I'd like to say it's been a, a lot of fun. It was wonderful having Kara came last month to this time and we talked a little bit about, how, what did we talk, what, what did we talk about? I think we talked about the housing.
Land use settlement.
Yeah. Land use. We talked about the land use settlement and it was just, it was, it was a good experience, I thought. And then yesterday, our pre-Craig, Linda Craig came, who was our first administrator. She was our first town administrator. And she was also the head of the, of the Bay League of Women Voters and they're quite a powerful person who we started. We grew here in, in Portola Valley and she talked a little bit about how the, how being a charter city would affect our general plan and how that, what the relationship there would be. And whether there's a financial possibility of becoming a charter city and thereby increasing our, our tax. So the, the financial implications of that were way up outside of our discussion, but it was just a discussion. It's, it's nothing but a discussion. And I, I'd say about 25 people come once a month and it's always different. I'm not even taking the role. Do I need to do that? But it's, it's been, yeah, it's been like, it's been like, you know, we reached at least 120 people within the beginning of this. So back me up on telling them it's not a study session.
I wanted to just point out one thing in my report from the CCG meeting from April 13th, which is that Portola Valley has an open seat on the commute.org board. So commute.org is, is a countywide, it's a, it's an offshoot of CCG, which is, is basically it's, its goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled through carpool and bus services and everything. If there's an open seat, it has to be billed by a council, by an elected official. So if anyone is interested in commute.org, you can feel free to talk to me. Have some representation if anyone is interested in that. I, I don't have, I don't remember their meeting time or stuff like that, but I can. Any more, need more from the council on the liaison reports?
The finance committee, I referenced it at the beginning, but for the inclusionary housing fund, I had made the assumption and I want to test. I had made the assumption, and I want to test out that it's right, that if we have a subcommittee of the finance committee, a subcommittee of race and equity, and a subcommittee of the town council, we can get together and the topic would be to compare and discuss the two draft policies that they've currently independently developed. And the idea would be to ask them to refine it. Um, just comment on each other's, but in a facilitated way. And, you know, just hearing the finance committee talking about things, that they had really good input, but they were, um, missing some aspects that we, we kind of want them to be thinking through. So I think it could be a really productive session. But is that, is there any issue with that from a Brown Act perspective or any other?
So would you have two people from the council as well?
Mary and I are in the subcommittee. We've already been appointed.
Right. Um, and then would you, would that group be making a recommendation to the full council?
It's open. I wanted, my motivation in suggesting it was to get a better understanding at the next level of detail of the finance committee's proposal, which was given verbally, not in writing. And similarly, race and equity, Lucy is on both committees. And, but she did not have a chance to say where they are coming from. So we could work it. My real goal is to see where the issues are and where there might be gaps that we ask them to go back and cover.
Oh, question.
Don't you want to?
Just throw that, just one more problem in. Betsy didn't mention that Open Space wants to be involved.
Oh, yeah.
Throw in one person from Open Space?
So we can, we can do it anyway. I'm just looking for whether there is, you know, practicality.
If the subcommittee wants to sort of gather opinions, as long as no other committee have a quorum, I, I think that's fine.
Well, and isn't the other issue is this body that you put together is not making recommendations to the council? It's going back to the individual committees. And then those committees, as a Brown Act meeting, can make recommendations up to us. Because otherwise, if you have this sort of amorphous body that starts making recommendations to us, I think we're going to be.
And they were clear, just to be, uh, they were going to bless their, the finance committee recommendation like yesterday. And they didn't have it in writing for us. So I was trying to put the, the brakes on that anyway and just say, well, why don't you talk about it as a committee and decide whether you have a more refined approach? And I think it would be more efficient if we actually enabled a discussion that included members of both. And the finance committee chair was happy with that idea, the concept for efficiency. But we, we don't have to do that.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, obviously the benefit of that is that two different groups aren't making recommendations in a silo that might conflict with each other. You know, that, I, it, it
Or have gaps. That they should each think about filling.
I think the other thing that I, I don't have a, have a, um, you know, a strong opinion about how it's done. But what I'm picking up from this conversation is my concern is that there, I'm wondering if, who is representing like the work that was done in that Hock Housing Element Committee process? Or the planning department that might be more familiar with some of the things that have been discussed during that period? Related to uses of the input, you know, that, that came up many times over, you know, the twenty month or eighteen months. So.
Well, they, they didn't know that was what they were being asked to do. If we want to add that into the process of them cross-checking with, you know, that expertise, somebody with that expertise, we can certainly.
And it can definitely just be Laura. That's probably the most simple. She's clearly way up to speed, but I, you know what I mean? And then we don't have to get into Brown Act with different committee members. But I just want to make sure that that perspective is brought in. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the planning department has commissioned a, a study on uh, inclusionary fund guidelines and how they should be implemented. So I didn't realize that the finance committee was, was starting this, this work.
Oh, they're well underway, as is the race and equi, race and equity had a document that they sent to us that they had developed last December.
Right, but that was, that came before the council. So we're aware of that work. But I wasn't aware that the finance committee was also, but it, it doesn't matter. Um, I, 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 you know, I, I, it's all great that, that we're focusing on these issues. And I think what you're describing, Judith, um, the collaboration, it probably does not require a, a, a public meeting Brown Act. But on the other hand, and so many, there are so many pieces here, you might want to have a public hearing to pull all those pieces together.
Well, eventually, yes, we're not trying to do anything. It, it's more to get them to have a more consistent set of parameters. Um, for example, the finance committee is very linear. We have scenario A, B, and C, or they call them one, two, and three. And they kind of dismissed one and two as not being practical for, for good reasons. But I think what they were missing is a little bit of knowledge of the sunrise concept and how that worked. And the fact that we, as a town council, might need to understand each of those three and ask them to weight them, like, like to provide more context for why one and two were just, you know, downgraded, uh, relatively speaking. So I think we need, we need to create some uniform analysis or questions, maybe. And that could be what Mary and I do, is work with Laura, come up with uniform questions, have them, you know, discuss them, whether it's in a notice meeting or not. I just think they have more work to do as a subcommittee and then as a committee independently to, to make a recommendation.
I really like the suggestion of A, working with Laura, but B, um, having uniform questions, at least as part of it, for each group. So that you are sure they're both assessing similar issues.
What about the comment that was made tonight that you've already sent the entire?
I don't know. That's not very sound.
But there, it is allocated in various different places.
It's mentioned potentially. It has nothing on it, but there's not a formal allocation that was made.
That's why your committee exists, because it hasn't.
Yeah. So, so anyway, I mean, that, that will clear up, or we can submit that as a question for Laura to respond to more formally and connect those dots separately. But I just wanted to know what the feedback is. So let me reach out to Laura and Mary and work on questions. And then hopefully facilitated discussion.
Public comment on liaison reports. I see Carolyn Bertongin's hand up. Carolyn, go ahead. He hadn't turned up in a while, so maybe there's something else. Hey, yeah. Carolyn, you still there? Okay. Nope, here she is. Carolyn, you could.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Yes, we have a delay in process. Um, I hope we can fix that one time. Um, I really appreciate the efforts of the new town council members. Um, we have mentioned that on several occasions and over the years, we need better communications. Um, I know you're working per committee to see how that communication can be better. But as we attend to these separate committees, we hear different uh, explanations and we hear a different decision-making process. So I'm hoping that we can put um, all the recordings. And I understand that all meetings in the town are now being recorded. And I simply cannot understand why the town council cannot request that every committee puts these recordings in the table. So you have your agenda. You can have whatever action minutes or summary or whatever, but put a recording next to it. It helps us review what was discussed. It helps us understand what the questions we asked. And it helps us to remember which asked, questions were not, uh, answered at the time. We have our, our personal notes, but we need to double check it. And I don't understand why this cannot be done. It would help a lot of, it would help to solve a lot of confusion. And so I'm asking town council, whether you have to put this as an agenda item, but ask to have the recordings in, in, on the website. I mean, I had to ask town staff to see if there's a recording of the fire, of the sustainability committee. And I have not received any answer from them. I understand that they might be understaffed, but if there's a recording, just put it on the agenda, then we don't have to bother staff. But this has been an issue for the last three years. And so help us better communicate among each other. We all are here with the same intent, and it is to improve this community. We love this community. We all want to work together. So please, I'm asking town council, put the recordings on the, on, on the website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Rita Combs is a hand up. Rita, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Um, I was changing planes last night and I was able to be on the finance committee. I think I, um, half the time sounded garbled if I mentioned anything because of the wifi there. But did appreciate being on there, uh, because the, the last meeting was, uh, incredible, especially with the audit person from the audit company that was there. And it seemed that there were decisions that were made. Um, and yesterday's meeting was, was pretty good. But a lot of the decisions that were made and the direction that was, um, things were going in, in the last meeting were then reversed, such as the, um, the audit committee doing things and, and more promises. And I had mentioned, you know, uh, it's the same people pretty much on that committee that, um, weren't the one, you know, weren't able to have the audit done in a timely manner and so on and so forth. And the same staff, and I know we're short staff and whatnot, but, um, not having the 2020 audit until this particular, you know, earlier this year and not having the other ones. Um, there still needs to be some oversight. You know, the residents are really concerned about the finances. I know that the, the town fees increased tonight and that got approved and moved forward. But, um, you know, the finance issue is not going to go away. And I really hope that this council, um, you know, and, and council member Judith Haskell do an excellent job with the finance committee. But I just, I just really hope, since all five of you have fiduciary responsibility for the town finances, you know, we as residents just really care what happens with this town. So please, let's move this forward and not just have promises, I'm working on it, happen when that's what all we've had without answers for the past couple of years. Let's, let's move this forward and have, even if it's a, a resident committee, other than, you know, people care. And so this is a time to move the financial issues forward, not to wait for somebody to come up with a plan and include the auditor, the, you know, the out-of-pocket auditor, not just the state auditor that's looking at our books right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item eight is the town manager report. Howard.
Thank you. I attended the wildfire preparedness fair this Saturday. It was good to see volunteers and vendors and the fire department and the sheriff all at the same spot and some of the council members. So I just also wanted to thank Jennifer Hammer and MJ Lee for putting a great event together. I know they spent a lot of time. You know, and Mimi appreciates it. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions on Howard's report from the council?
I, I swung by and I'm not a liaison for this committee. I thought it was a fantastic event. Um, really well attended. The vendors had real live options for the things that are potentially available. Um, got to actually put out a fire. That was very fun. Much to a four-year-old who was watching the, uh, to their interest. So that was a little alarming, but they now at least know in theory how to do it. No, it was great. And we should really thank the people who put that together. They did a fantastic job.
I just want to say, Jennifer, I think, worked like, like forty hours a week for months preparing that. So, um, yeah, I'm sure any additional outreach to say thanks would be a long way with her.
It was, I stopped by the last hour to agree to that. Any, any public comments? Any public comment on the town?
We should do a adjourn.
Okay. All, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you, everyone.